Good afternoon, everyone. I'm filling in on behalf of Mayor Chop today. She's unable to attend. I would like to remind everyone that our meetings are web-streamed and televised. For those in attendance, I would ask you to ensure your phones are on silent mode. We begin today with a public hearing meeting. We will then go into a special council meeting following that. I would ask everyone to keep their comments brief as we have a lot to get through today. Also, a reminder that we don't entertain third-time speakers to a motion before us. I now call the public hearing committee to order, and I believe we're going to approve the agenda as there are changes to the agenda. Oh, sorry. Okay, so there are no changes to the agenda. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Counselor Rabbit, second to the Counselor Taylor, and all in favor? That's carried. Are there any declarations of interest? Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, ma'am. Deputy Chair, or Deputy Mayor, on item 3C, the staff report PD-20-24, I have interests in common with a landowner within the circulation area. So I'll be excusing myself.
I'm sorry. I now officially open the public meeting, held under the Municipal Act, the Planning Act, and the county policy. Please be advised that to preserve your right to appeal to the local planning appeals tribunal, you are required to make comments or provide written submissions to the passage of a bylaw. As the road closure report and the first planning report are interrelated, we will hear both staff presentations, and then we will open the floor to questions from council. For the public, I would highlight that the potential road closure report is a very different type of public hearing. Norfolk County has established a higher level of transparency around potential road closures than is required in legislation. This simply means that when you are commenting or submitting information to council on the potential road closure, it isn't done to preserve any right to appeal. There is no appeal to LPAT respecting whatever decision council may make on the road. It is also important to note that there are no final decisions being made on these matters today. These meetings are to allow the public to provide initial comments, and further reports will come forward at a future date. And for the record, these are not my comments. Are these directly from the clerk's office, or are these the mayor's? Okay, thank you. Moving on to staff report CS-20-17, the proposal closure and conveyance of part of Bridge Street and part of Lynn Street Plan 207 Port Dover. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are in Committee Room A today presenting this staff report. We have had a request from the planning department if they could present the planning report related to this matter first, and then we'll follow with the road closure report, if that's acceptable to council.
I'm seeing no objections to that. That's fine with me. Thank you.
Are you waiting for us? Can you hear us here?
Yes, we can, Tricia. Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm going to be presenting this report on behalf of Mohammed. So this application relates to an official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment, the file number specifically OPNPL-2019014, and Southern PL-20019. So this is an application to rezone the lands from marine commercial and hazard land to urban residential type six and zone with some special provisions. And they relate specifically to three parcels in Port Dover, 2 Lynn Street on the east side of Lynn Street, west of the Lynn River, and 230 Chapman Street East, and 225 Chapman Street East as well. So it creates, these lots would go together to create one large development proposal. Specifically, the development proposal, can council, excuse me, is council able to see the presentation right now?
No, right now, we can see staff, both committee rooms.
Okay, I believe somebody was going to pull that up.
I was saying.
Okay, we're waiting for clerks to pull that up for us. I will, there is mapping which will help make the presentation easier for everybody. I will just continue while that comes up. But essentially, the proposal is to revitalize the industrial brownfield site for this residential use. They're proposing up to 375 units, which would incorporate 10 townhouses at 225 Chapman Street, 16 townhouses, and 54 stacked townhouses at 230 Chapman Street, and 295 apartment units, which would be in three building structures at 2 Lynn Street. And this would include the incorporation of the road closure to enable all of this development. We received a number of comments through the regular circulation process from different staff departments and agency, different agencies. We have noted, for council's information, some comments we received through the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, as well as Long Point Conservation Authority. So two key comments that we received from the MNRF, Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, identified that no onsite activity, and that includes site alteration, should occur until a screening is complete in order for it to be in accordance with the Antiquitized Species Act. The next point from the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry identified that a record of site condition would be required before any redevelopment. And our official plan also requires a record of site condition as well before any redevelopment could occur. From the Long Point Regional Conservation Authority, there was some extensive comments, and we're summarizing them here. They've identified that they have no objection to the request for relief for lands that have not been identified in the hazard area. They also highlight that any proposed site alteration in the floodway is not consistent with the provincial policy statement, specifically Section 312. And any site alteration within portions of the flood fringe may be permitted through contemplation of a detailed study to assess the suitability of applying the two-zone concept within the Lynn River watershed. So to be clear, that would be a broader exercise beyond the intent of this application for that two-zone permission. In terms of public input, we've received an enormous amount of information and feedback from members of the community, and we have summarized those into five general themes. The first is public access and waterfront trails, so ensuring that there's a continuation of public access to the waterfront. Flooding and floodplain issues, traffic and parking, building height, and there was also feedback, with positive feedback, about the potential positive impact of this development. And another theme that came up as well later on before we finished, after we finished this presentation, was around confirmation of ownership. So in addition to items that the members of the community have identified, staff have four major issues that have to be addressed before the application can move forward with any recommendations for council. So those issues include soil and groundwater contamination, floodplain and adjacent hazard lands, density and parking, and design considerations. Potentially, this would be a large development and would impact the way Port Dover looks, so design is an important integral component. So at this time, staff have two recommendations recommending that this staff report be received for information, and that any comments that are received become part of a statutory public meeting and be considered in a future recommendation staff report. So at this time, between Mohammed and myself, we'd be happy to answer any questions after the other report from Corporate Services.
Okay, thank you. Staff, are there any questions to staff? Counselor Rabbits?
Thank you, through you. I'm going to begin my question here. We're on page 13 of our agenda, and we're referencing the conclusion of our staff's report. It states, "From the county's perspective, the portions of Bridge Street and Lynn Street should remain as open, traveled, and maintained roads for as long as possible." Further, it says to allow for the use by the general public until a developer has secured all necessary approvals from the county. My question is, you know, is it possible for our council to reject the request for the road closures? Or if this one of those examples where we have a development come to council, we may not necessarily approve of some of the ideas in that proposal, but then, you know, it's going to go to LPAT later. We don't actually have an ability to say no. We just have an ability to sort of guide the development process, to voice the concerns of residents, and try to find maybe a compromise or a more amenable solution for the county. Do we actually have the ability to say no to the road closures?
It's Brandon here, through the chair. I would recommend that we have the road closure presentation now, and then that will help us to answer the question.
Sure, go ahead, Brandon.
So we'll turn it over to Shelley and Lydia.
Sorry, before I do that, Counselor Michelle has his hand up here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Will that then preclude any other questions we might have had about this report after we've had that one? Or can we ask all of those conclusively?
Sure, let's ask them all. Let's go through both reports, and then ask staff, and just specify your question to the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll pass it to Lydia Harrison, who's going to present this report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tricia has just provided an overview of Sure Developments Limited's proposed development for the former Gambel Shipyard. With respect to the road closure report, staff present the following. Sure Developments Limited is the current owner of 230 Chapman Street East and 2 Lynn Street Port Dover. These parcels are separated by opened, traveled, and maintained portions of Bridge Street and Lynn Street. Sure Developments has applied for the closure and conveyance of the portion of these streets for purposes of creating one large parcel to allow for economical management of contaminated materials and to accommodate floodplain restrictions on the Lynn Street property. Without the assembly of the parcels through the conveyance of the portions of the streets, Sure Development states it is unlikely that they will be able to effectively and efficiently develop 2 Lynn Street, and these lands will likely remain as contaminated and vacant or continue to be used as marine commercial, marine craft salvage yard, or related industrial uses for the foreseeable future. The report contains extensive information for council's consideration, and staff have highlighted the following areas. Traffic study, prepared by Paradigium Transportation Solutions Limited for MHBC planning. Both Lynn and Bridge Streets primarily function, primary functions were found to be land service, access to properties, not traffic service, carrying through traffic. Existing traffic volumes were determined to be low, less than 25 vehicles per hour during AM peak hours, and less than 35 vehicles per hour during PM peak hour. Closing will divert traffic to Chapman Street, Market Street, and St. Andrews Street. The report did not include any pedestrian traffic information. Relocation of services. Currently, there is municipal infrastructure located within the portion of Lynn Street. The developer is aware of the existing services and accepts the responsibility for the cost to relocate same, and for cost to remediate contaminated materials. The capital project for Lynn Street reconstruction can be canceled should council decide to sell the portion of Lynn Street. This would result in a savings of $386,000 for the county. The county will reserve an easement over the lands until the existing services are relocated. Valuation. The current council approved valuation for the sale of streets in urban locations is $1.25 per square foot. Staff are of the opinion that the sale of portions of Lynn Street and Bridge Street qualifies as a unique situation, and recommend that an appraisal be obtained to determine a current market value to assist in determining a selling price. Privately owned public accessible spaces, or POPs. These are spaces that although privately owned and maintained, are required to be open for the use by the public pursuant to a zoning bylaw or a planning agreement. The condominium corporation will typically be responsible to maintain the POPs. The mapping attached illustrates a proposed public pedestrian walkway. This is only proposed, and exact location for the walkway will have to be determined between the county and the developer through the site plan process. Other considerations. To ensure that the developer actually develops the property and generates economic benefit to the county, the county will enter into an agreement of purchase and sale with the developer, conditional on the items as set out in the report. Staff will work with the developer to move the project forward, and develop a more detailed and agreed-to plan to present to council at a later date, i.e. the selling price, terms and conditions of sale, site remediation, easements for infrastructure, finalization of the Interior Control Bylaw, Port Dover Secondary Plan Process, reconveyance of the property if no construction is commenced within 18 months of the conveyance. Regarding for public input. Staff have received numerous emails and letters from residents in respect to the proposed closures of Lynn Street and Bridge Street. These submissions have been attached to the report for council's consideration. And with that, staff will take any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Lydia. I'll pass it back over to Counselor Rabbits to pick up where he left off.
Thank you. And follow up on that point. So we were discussing the proposed road closures, and I picked up on a point in our conclusion stating that staff would like to see the roads open for as long as possible, which made me then infer that it was not possible to keep the roads open from staff's perspective. So I guess my question back to staff is, are you currently recommending the road closures? Is that what we're to expect in a future report to council?
Through the chair to Counselor Rabbits. It's really up to council to determine whether you wish to close the road or not.
Thank you for that clarification, because just by looking at the report, you know, I was looking at, are we debating option one or option two, as printed on page eight of our agenda, six of 13 of the report? We have a couple options before us for the sale of the roads, but I thought those options were, you know, precluding that we were deciding to sell them. So I just wanted to make sure we're having that discussion, that council does have the ability to prevent the sale of these public roads. Further into the report, contained within the conclusion, if we look at page 12 of 13, it's page 14 of our report, staff are stating that policy EBS-22, that there is going to be a requirement for an exemption to a part of the policy, and I quote, "Permanent road allowances, lanes, and alleyway closures states that if the transfer of titles not complete within two years from the date of council authorization, such transfer of title, the approval of such transfer of title will lapse." going to be a requirement for an exemption to a part of the policy, and I quote, "Permanent road allowances, lanes, and alleyway closures," states that if the transfer of title is not complete within two years from the date of council authorization, such transfer of title, the approval of such transfer of title will lapse. Since the required approvals for this development will likely take longer than two years to complete, council will need to exempt this development from the policy requirement. Now, when I was reading into Valley's statement earlier, the previous agent, they didn't have any language therein seeking an exemption from EBS hyphen 22. In fact, they said that the proposal had aligned with that policy and that they weren't seeking any exemptions and they were meeting that policy. So, you know, what I'm inferring from that is staff are seeing that this could potentially take longer than two years, and at the time, the agent wasn't considering that this application could take that long for approval. So I would just like maybe some comment back from staff that, you know, are the agents that you're currently working with on the same page where this exemption could be required and that this approval process could take longer than two years in duration?
Through the chair, I'll start, and Lydia can add to it. I think how we're considering this transaction is contingent upon a number of factors. So the developer does not want to go through with a very long process if something that's critical to his development will never be obtained. However, as you correctly pointed out in the staff report, we want to keep the road open and traveled as long as possible. So we would have a contingent sale of the road with the developer meeting a whole host of requirements, including final approval of site plan, drawing a permit within a prescribed period of time. Because you put all those conditions in there, it, to meet all those conditions, it might last more than two years. So that's why staff took a different approach than the first person. That would have been a more simple conveyance where the transfer could have happened earlier, but we have less control over how the development happens at that point in time. Since there's a number of contingencies that are outlined in the report, for the developer to meet those contingencies would likely take longer time, and some of that might be outside of the developer's control. If someone appeals, you know, appeals it, then the timelines get changed at that point in time. And I'm not sure if Shelley or Lydia would add anything to that.
Through the mayor, yes, as the CEO has outlined, those would be the concerns is that with this development, it may take longer than two years and would fall outside of that limitation. So to exempt it from the policy will allow us to go forward without us having to start the process over again.
Thank you for that. And if you may indulge me in just one more question before we allow other counselors to speak to it. My question was about the EA's. I believe we've had a Phase One and Two already completed, and I've had some questions from members of the public just regarding the general contempt nation of the brownfield and what remediation may be required. The Gamble Shipyard is well-known to the community. We're all very excited to see a development coming forward to restore that property, but I think we all want to make sure that we're doing it right. And a lot of folks have asked me specifically for that EA information. Where can it be obtained? How can I get a hold of it? Is it publicly accessible? And I was hoping that we could have a staff member speak to the EA portion of the report, please.
Through the chair to Counselor Rabbits. We would ask that Brandon or Tricia speak to Counselor Rabbits' questions. We haven't seen anything in regards to the environmental assessment report.
Well, to the chair, to the council, I can answer that question. We received ESA Phase One and Phase Two for all these three properties. In their report, it mentions that an appropriate remediation strategy will need to be considered to confirm the suitability of site for its intended development and use. So the next stage probably will be the remediation process and RSE, record of site condition, before we can approve the further development.
Thank you for that. I guess just further to my point, is it something that's readily available on, say, the county's website? Is it something that's accessible, that document that you had received, the EA?
We have, we have actually circulated this to the member of the public, whoever asked or requested for the document. We don't have any platform at this moment from the county's side to, I mean, to share this documents, but anybody who want to get that information will be able to send it to them.
Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And my question is with respect to the road here. When you add up Bridge Street and Lynn Street, it adds up to .79 of an acre, almost .8. And is it my understanding that if Lynn Street does not get sold to the developer, that the total plans for redevelopment of that site change? Can you clarify that for me?
Through the mayor to Counselor Columbus. Again, I would have to ask planning to speak to that question. If council decides not to close the road allowance, how the development would have to change?
And I would think it would have to change in major, majorly. Perhaps we can hear from the planner.
Yep. Through the chair, to be clear, our understanding is that, yes, that this road is an integral component for the proposed development, and without it, it would impact the future development. And hopefully, once the agents are able to present, they will be able to speak to the need for Lynn Street further.
Will we be hearing from the agent, the developer, today?
I believe they're registered to speak, yes.
Okay, thanks. And is there any thought, if we closed Lynn Street, that the county could actually pick up some land along the river of equal, like approximately .79 of an acre right along the river? Or do they have plans to develop something along the river, like docks and boat connections and that type of thing?
Through the chair, they did not provide any information about any dock, any proposed docks, or for the position to the waterfront. In fact, there is a setback they provided, which is what I can even place around 20 to 24 meter from the building to the waterfront. Just to supplement Mohammed there, through the chair, staff have identified that public access to the waterfront is a key principle and a key issue to look at for this proposal. And so since the county controls the right of way, I think that would be something that staff and the public, and it sounds like yourself, are suggesting would be important to pursue.
Right. If the public is giving up Lynn Street and Bridge Street, there should be some compensation along the riverfront to pick up land for public use, I would think. Thanks. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Sorry, just to augment, through the deputy mayor, in the sale of, in the first report on page 12, it talks about POPs, which would include some, these would be privately owned, publicly accessible spaces, and there is some targeting for that. One of the recommendations in the first report is that council, if you want to move forward, is that council proceeds to have more substantive discussions with the developer on a potential framework for a purchase and sale agreement to bring that to council, to bring an update of those efforts to council in October. And that would include, you know, exactly what they would be willing to give up. It would include how we would do evaluation and those type of questions. So it would be staff's view that when a public asset is provided for this development on a sale, we'd like to get back increased value from the sale of that asset. Thank you, Mr. Seale.
Counselor Van Passen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And maybe staff could give me an answer to this. I'm sort of, when I read through all this, I thought that's what they were sort of looking for. The developer has two separate parcels, and he needs sort of a commitment from the county whether we would be willing to close a road and not close, or not close a road. And that way, they will base their plans on one large parcel and the layout and the setbacks, and all of those things have to fit on the parcel of land. And then staff would be recommending, you know, one way or the other, whether we close the road, but if we do that, we still want a publicly accessible road, we want to trade it off, or some other things. And yes, if anybody petitions to close a road, a report has to come forward. There's a whole process you got to follow. So if you just take the one in isolation, yeah, it kind of looks ridiculous, but when you start looking at the bigger picture, and, you know, all of this should have been, like, you can't really deal with it until you end that negotiation, lay some real concrete plans, and then say, well, potentially, this is what we would get for that, this is where we could go, and that's the time. But the way the process is set up, it's two separate items. So, you know, if all you read was a little thing about somebody petitioning to close a road and not bringing in the bigger picture, you might get the false sense of what's going on there. And, you know, back in the good old days, they probably, they need the little wink, wink, nod, nod from council that we're at least willing to look at it, right? But we can't give them a wink, wink, nod, nod. We have to do it officially according to the process, right? And then let staff and whoever negotiate, you know, we're willing to give up this, but we want something better in return. And then that report will come back to council and to another public meeting and all those things, and we look at the whole comprehensive plan, not just every little item in isolation. Now, am I anywhere close to the right mark on that from staff's point of view?
Through the chair to Counselor Van Passen and council. Yeah, you're pretty close. The way the process is set up, it's transparent. We have to give notice prior to going into this process. We also have specifically asked for the direction to enter into some discussions to bring that back to council. Staff also outlined a number of considerations on page 12 of things that they would be looking to, to be part of that agreement with the developer prior to, you know, to develop that framework for that transaction. So the intent really is, if council has no interest in pursuing this, tell us now before everybody wastes, you know, a lot of time and effort. If there is interest, let us go negotiate an agreement to come back to council with to make a decision, and we like to do that, you know, fairly quickly, obviously. And then that way, you can have a more meaningful discussion on what are the defined and negotiated benefits to the transaction.
Yes, thank you. I do have one other question. Reading through some of the appendices to the report, it's on page 113, a little line in there caught my eye, and I probably never thought of it before, but it says, "Development charges are waived for brownfield redevelopment projects." So do I have that straight? That because this is considered a brownfield site, that we will waive development charges on 375 units, which is about $3 million bucks, when I do the math? Can somebody verify that for me?
Through the chair, I'd have to go back and refamiliarize myself with the DC bylaw exemption on how it's written, but brownfield redevelopment, there is a DC credit for that, and I'd have to go back and just confirm the exact wording of how the credit is structured. So I will, I'll get that information back to council.
But I am correct that they don't have to pay it, so they're, you know, we got a lot of infrastructure needs replacing. We use the development charges fund for that, and here's a developer who doesn't have to put $3 million bucks into it. That gives him a little bit of a heads up, or a head start on anybody else, doesn't it?
Through the chair, yeah. Usually, the brownfield exemptions are obviously designed in a way to have developers take on properties that would not normally be developed easily, so brownfield. And like I said, I'd have to go back and familiarize myself with how your DC bylaw is written. In some cases, it is a broad exemption; in other cases, it's up to the actual remediation cost of the property. So I'm not, I'd have to go back and confirm how our bylaw is written.
Any further questions before, Counselor Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. On page six of our agenda, and it's page four of the report, it refers to the interim control bylaw, and under that heading, it suggests that the, that the developers understand that there's to be no new development under the interim control bylaw during that period, but they feel that their proposal to close and convey the portions of Bridge Street and Lynn Street does not fall under the purview of the interim control bylaw. And I just hope that it's possible for me to perhaps, with respect to planning staff, if I were to just ask our county solicitor, who I just happened to notice is to my left, if that is, if that is correct.
So the interim control bylaw prevents the building department from issuing a building permit. That's the prohibition under that bylaw. It doesn't actually prohibit anything else. So a person can make an application for a planning matter or to close a road, but they can't build anything on it until the interim control bylaw is no longer in force, if they ever became the owners of it in the interim.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I can just ask one more to our solicitor. I don't have my notes with me. Paula, what is the expiry date of that interim control bylaw?
Well, that's a bit of a moving target. That has now been resolved because through the emergency provisions, we got an extra 160 some odd days. I can't remember how many days. I did the math recently and sent an email to our clerk. I believe it expires in early January, but the exact date, I can't recall.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions. So, Counselor Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Further to that, I am just curious, in this report, and I know that at the outset of the, of this report, four items of, you know, note were itemized, and one of them was, I believe it said, "Design considerations," with, and I believe staff, I believe it was Ms. Givens, mentioned that, in other words, making sure that this development looks like Port Dover and is consistent with, you know, Port Dover's history and current sort of, you know, aesthetic culture. And I'm just asking this question. I noticed that on some previous similar reports like this, we had asked that the Norfolk Heritage Committee be circulated on those reports. And I'm just curious as to why that committee was not circulated on this one. Sorry, Madam Chair, I'm not sure who I would be directing that to on our staff.
Looking at you, Tricia, but I want to put you in the hot seat. Is there someone from?
Thank you.
Maybe I should pass it back to Brandon.
Brandon's nodding at me. Through the chair, yeah, that is a good point, and I can simply say that that was missed. And we can certainly ensure that they're circulated as part of the conversation going forward, in particular for any recommendation report that comes along. But in the meantime, we could certainly include them and get their input before there's any final reports coming forward for council.
Thank you, Tricia.
Okay, I have a whole bunch of questions, so I'm going to go at it here and just interrupt me if something else comes and you'd like for me to stop, council. Through, I'll try to separate them out with questions with regards to Lynn Street and then, and then to the rezoning. So dealing with Lynn Street, I guess my question to the planning department, because this is the first time that I've dealt with a proposal where the sale of a publicly owned road is being discussed and is contingent on development. Can you speak to why Norfolk County should be concerned about the sale of the road? Obviously, we know that it's a benefit to the developer, but Um, obviously, we know that it's a benefit to the developer, but what, what am I supposed to talk to my community members about when, um, for the first time ever, I've got a report in front of me that talks about the sale of a public road?
Want me to start? Through the chair, um, to the chair, um, road closure report, um, does include, on page 11 of the report, does include some advantages, and then also on page 12, some disadvantages. The advantages, of course, are advantages to the county and disadvantages to the county. Uh, I can go through those if you would like. Um, the advantages, of course, are revenue generated from, from the sale of the property, uh, the increased tax revenue created by the new development, reduced risk and liability to the county, no longer having to look after an open road and be, uh, be liable for anything that occurs on that road, uh, no future required upkeep, maintenance, and snow removal, the cancellation of the proposed reconstruction project, the remediation of site contamination of the portions of Bridge Street and Lynn Street at no cost to the county, relocated and installation of new infrastructure at no cost to the county, uh, possible removal of a municipal san- sanitary pumping station to be relocated and become a private pumping station owned and maintained by the development, a possible benefit to the community by the creation of a privately owned and publicly accessible spaces, or POPs, as they're so referred to. Um, disadvantages, um, this will be a closure and sale of portions of a currently open, traveled, and maintained street and pedestrian walkway. Um, pub- public objection and backlash to the loss of a transportation corridor. Um, into the interim control bylaw restrictions on development, and the sale will have, sale will have to be delayed until the bylaw is repealed. Uh, the official plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, will, will require approval from council for the development to proceed, and the sale will have to be delayed until these proposals are granted. Um, precedent setting, future developers may look to include portions of open, traveled, and maintained streets as a way of increasing development footprints, and each would have to be, um, looked at on an individual basis.
Thank you, Lydia. That was, uh, leads perfectly into my next question. From a planning perspective, should we be concerned about, um, setting precedent on the sale of roads? So, that's, uh, kind of a twofold question for me. One, from a planning policy perspective, does that harm us? Um, and two, in general, just setting precedent in our community with our development community, is this something that we can probably expect to continue to happen?
So through the chair, uh, although this may be something new, it is something that comes up, uh, when looking at parcels of land in your existing urban area. And so, although each one is looked at on its own merits, and of course, subject to the, the comments received, the big thing about this particular one is it would help facilitate the redevelopment and the remediation of a derelict site. Combined with that, you also have, uh, future savings on operating costs. And so it has to, but it has to make sense for the location, the traffic flow, and the proposed development. It might be possible, especially in older areas of urban, uh, urban municipalities, you might find some of these circumstances. So it may come up again in the future. From an overall policy perspective, uh, it is something that is, that would be considered in order to help facilitate the redevelopment of the land.
Thank you. From a negotiation perspective, um, this council has talked about how to better negotiate deals with developers, and it's typically based around density. Uh, I find that's when we, we start to dig in a little bit deeper. Um, is there leverage for this committee to sit around and, and begin negotiations just based on rezoning, prior to even getting into the conversation of approvals on density and, and so on?
Through the chair, just to clarify, um, is your reference about negotiations about the road closure, or is it about the actual, whether or not the use would even be permitted, and how much height and density?
Uh, I guess it would be more, more to the road closure, um, when we're looking, so we've got, well, a little bit of both. We have the rezoning file in front of us as well, and so I guess my question is, really, the negotiations start at this point in time with the developer, we don't have to wait until there's, um, approvals on various other things, and we, we're sitting discussing, um, the density. When, when someone comes to the planning department and looks for approvals on, on a file, and they're just in the preliminary rezoning, uh, phase, do we still have leverage to say, this is what we are looking for, and this is what we'd like for in exchange, or is that a better conversation, um, further down the road?
Through the chair, I would suggest that is, uh, a big part of today. Today is the official public meeting and statutory day to hear from the public and stakeholders what their comments and issues are. Those issues then, so the next step would be to look to resolve the issues. And so, density and height is one of the issues, that's something that the applicant would then go back and consider, how are they gonna respond to the public comments, the staff comments, the council comments? Um, there is a little bit of the chicken and egg thing as it relates to the road closure. There may be some direction needed on that, just in advance of then considering any recommendation on the actual appropriateness of the density. We do expect that there's a number of issues that we're gonna hear today, and that staff have already identified, that it's gonna take some time. So I think, if you're talking about the negotiation process, it's kind of from beginning to end, and we're only partway through.
Right.
So there's a number of opportunities. This will come back to council, and there'll be, uh, more opportunity to look at direction on height and density.
Okay, thank you. Can you elaborate on the infrastructure that's presently under Lynn Street? And can you, um, share with council and myself, uh, what the benefits and disadvantages would be to, to having, um, the infrastructure moved over to be, it would be, um, privately owned, uh, where right now, it's presently publicly?
I think we, we'll start with referring to corporate services first, and then we do have, uh, someone from development engineering here if we need to supplement.
Yes, through the chair, um, through our circulation process, engineer did advise that there is currently infrastructure within the Lynn Street right-of-way. And, um, I think that that is, um, sanitary, and, of course, the, the developer has indicated that they would be responsible for the relocation of these services. And so, of course, we did, we did have, in the capital project for Lynn Street, a reconstruction, uh, that was proposed, and now, if, if council should decide to close and convey the Lynn Street right-of-way, then that capital project could basically be, be canceled, um, with the savings to the municipality of approximately $386,000. Uh, I, I myself can't speak specifically to, uh, what infrastructure is there. Um, there is also a notation about a pumping station, and that that pumping station would have to be relocated, and the cost for the maintenance and the ongoing, um, cost for the pumping station would also transfer to the developer. But I would ask for either somebody from Public Works or, um, uh, the Engineering Development Department to speak to that more specifically.
Thank you, Lydia. If I may, um, through the, um, chair, um, we also speak to some cost avoidance in the financial services comments, uh, regarding, uh, future operating costs for ongoing maintenance and snow removal. If, uh, the, uh, the property is disposed, disposed of, that, those costs would be avoided as well. But we'll pass it over to the planning team for further comments.
Sure. Through the chair, uh, definitely here from development engineering. We currently do have some sanitary sewer, a bit of water main and a forest main that goes along with the pump station. Um, by closing Lynn Street, we would eliminate those assets altogether in the county capacity. Um, essentially, we'd remove them from that street at the developer's expense and eliminate any future maintenance for those assets on the books entirely. Um, there is a possibility of relocating that pump station or eliminating it altogether, depending on where we can get gravity. Um, so we would eliminate those assets on the books for any future maintenance or reconstruction projects, and, um, potentially just get rid of any infrastructure from that area.
And then there was a comment made prior, um, that that potentially would be privately owned by the developer, so, besides not having capital expenditures to, to maintain and repair or replace down the road, is that a positive thing, that we would want to have this type of infrastructure owned privately versus publicly?
Through the chair, that is typical for any condo site. All infrastructure within the condo site is privately owned. Um, the county doesn't have any responsibility for that waste or that infrastructure until it crosses a property line and hits a municipal sewer. Um, so that is definitely a benefit to the county and very common in the condo development.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my next question, what assurances will the county have in place if we move forward on this, with this direction on the road? Um, what types of things would we, would we look to do to, um, confirm the position of the developer and assure the community that these, these things will be followed through on? What is typical of us, and what plans do you have to line those next steps up?
I'll, I'll start through the, through the chair. Um, I think, uh, I think when you look at the other considerations, uh, on, uh, page 12 of the agenda, page 10 of 13 on the report, um, staff have outlined a number of things that, uh, staff would consider, uh, as restrictive, uh, covenants, uh, in the transaction. So, the big, um, if I were to summarize it, it's, um, they need to bring forward a plan that is acceptable to, uh, the planning standards. Um, they need to be able to remediate the site, uh, including the, uh, the ability to remediate, um, the, the road site. Uh, there would, we would also put a restrictive, uh, covenant on there that if no construction was started within 18-day, or 18 months, uh, of the conveyance, um, that we would be able to, um, uh, take the road back. So that would avoid, uh, land banking, uh, by the developer. So, um, if we're doing this to, uh, get a good development, uh, then we want to make sure that they meet the conditions of what a good development is, and they actually develop it to, um, you know, to be able to deliver the economic benefit back to the community. But the, the, the final terms would be part of the negotiations, which we're, we've asked for us to move forward with.
Through the chair, I think we're also hearing about, uh, public connectivity or public access being something that we'd, uh, want to look at as well.
Thank you. Um, so, looking at not only approvals from Norfolk County, but we've heard, you know, that there are discussions that need to happen with the Ministry of Natural Resources, Long Point Conservation Authority is, is documented in the report. Um, so what other permits and whatnot will the developer require? If we're looking at this, this essentially, um, giving more space to then receive public connectivity and public access to the water, what other hurdles is the developer going to have to jump through on their own? And the reason why I ask is because how do we, all, I'm assuming all of those permits would need to be approved prior to, um, making a decision on, or confirming, uh, the sale of the land? But what other, what other things are out of Norfolk County's control that the developer is going to need to do to, um, work on the public, public waterfront access?
Well, through the chair, I think we, we have a number of planning tools that, uh, we can utilize, uh, including, um, obviously, there'd be a site plan application will come forward, uh, where the more detailed review will happen, and will, um, we can, uh, negotiate with the developer for all the other aspects, including the design aspects, um, public access, any easement, um, and then, um, the parking, uh, number of parking, building height, all those will be further detailed review in that site plan stage. Um, and also, uh, we have, we have an option to hold the land for any further development through a holding provision, uh, before we, uh, before the developer can satisfy all the requirements.
Uh, I've had questions about an independent traffic analysis. Is this in the plans for Norfolk County?
Yeah, uh, we already, uh, requested that they can to, I mean, about a third-party, um, traffic analysis and traffic review. Um, it is not started yet, the developer and applicant suggested that it would be done when a more detailed, uh, design will come forward.
Thank you. Um, my next question, would the sale, if the, if the sale of the, the road went ahead with council in, uh, exchange, obviously, for waterfront access, would that land be deeded to the county, or would it remain, uh, privately owned? Have we had that discussion?
I'll, I'll start, I have planning, uh, before, but on page nine of the report, um, page 11 in the agenda package, it talks about privately owned, publicly accessible spaces. Um, and, uh, though that's not the final determination, I think that is where, um, we were looking at. And that way, uh, the public gets the, uh, green space and the access, but the condominium corporation and that, uh, in this instance, would, uh, be responsible for maintaining it. Um, so we view that as, um, the preferred method going, uh, forward. So in that case, uh, there would be no deed back to the county, uh, it would be, as it's outlined in the report, uh, privately owned but publicly, uh, accessible.
So at that point in time, what protects the county and, and the public access? What, what do we do to ensure that, um, down the road, the landowner doesn't change their mind? And certainly, given consideration, especially in the Port Dover community, we know that we own very little beachfront access. Um, so what happens should the land decide to be sold, or, um, I don't know, severed off, or the condo corporation changes, um, their mind? What, what assurances would be in place to preserve that space?
Uh, sorry, through the chair, I'll have, uh, I'll have our solicitor comment further on it, but it is part of the, uh, site plan agreement, uh, and it's registered in the Planning Act itself, but, uh, I'll let, uh, the solicitor provide, uh, more, um, legal information on that.
I actually don't have anything to add. The CAO has done it correctly.
So site, uh, the site plan control agreement would protect that space for the community in perpetuity? How, what, what does that look like?
Pardon me, the, there are a number of agreements that have to happen here. There's gonna be the condominium agreement, uh, and those things will be subject to terms. You have your site plan agreement, which is subject to terms. Those things all get filed and, uh, as agreements that exist on title. So, that's typically how you assure it. If the property were to ultimately be redeveloped, then we'd be in a different reality in that context.
So it's safe to assume that that, the, um, the POPs space, privately owned public spaces, would be safe as long as, uh, it didn't change hands, and look in, into a potential redevelopment of the land?
Yeah, I, I would even, yes, I would say that's true. It would have to be a redevelopment.
Okay. Um, so I just learned today, reading the comments, that there is no appeal option on the road. Is the county able to put some kind of measure in place? Like, what, what does the public do if they're unsatisfied with the decision we make? Is there a window of opportunity? I know we've got a boat petition rolling around, uh, the county right now, uh, so when individuals sign the boat and/or send an email to council members that say, for public record, that, that's not actual, that's not factual, because, uh, there's no appeal method on the sale of Lynn Street, and that's specific to the boat petition? Is that correct?
Um, through the chair, I think the, the leverage that the county would have on this is, it would be a, uh, contingent sale with restrictive conditions that have to be met by the developer. So the, the biggest condition would be that the approved plan would have to meet the, the, the council would have to approve the site plan effectively for this, um, uh, for this development prior to, uh, the conveyance and transfer of the land. The challenge that we have, uh, with this development is because it's integral to their overall development, they, they don't want to proceed on a two- or three-year basis, um, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then not knowing if council's actually gonna convey the road to them. Uh, so, the solution- So, the solution was to have a contingent sale so that if council is of the mindset that if all the conditions are met, then they would actually agree to the transfer of the sale, then there's some surety to the developer at that point in time. But as I said, the biggest levers would be that the site plan wanted to be agreed to, then there would be no conveyance of the road at that point in time.
This is a question with regards to contaminants and environmental assessments. So, or sorry, not the environmental assessment, the contaminants in general. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that you are able to transfer contaminants around on the same lot from which they came to some extent. That's probably a very sloppy definition of it, but that's my understanding of it. And so, through merging of these two properties with the sale of the road, this gives the developer some ability to deal with those contaminants that are on the site. If there are similar contaminants and the property across the road on Chapman also has those contaminants, that is a separate parcel from itself and those contaminants are not to be mixed with other contaminants from across the road on the other Chapman location or the Lynn Street location. Is that a fair comment to make?
May I speak to that, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. So, under the Environmental Protection Act, to redevelop a piece of property to a more sensitive use, you require a record of site condition and that would be true on the amalgamated site as it is. It's not, I think what you're thinking of is that typically, environmental laws don't take shape, if you will, if the contamination remains on the property for the use, under its current use. So, if they were expanding their property to continue contaminating some kind of thing which was going to result in contamination, as long as it wasn't going off property, the Ministry of the Environment would not be involved in a regulatory capacity for the most part. What's happening here is if they purchase properties and they merge or whatever happens, then it becomes one larger lot and they're redeveloping it to a more sensitive use, which is what's proposed here in the longer run, they will have to clean it up somehow. So, there's two different ways you can do that under the Environmental Protection Act. One is the one almost no one ever does because they can't do it, it's too expensive, which is to actually clean up everything there to a certain standard. That's typically not done unless you are digging out the entire thing. So, if you're digging out the entire thing and putting in clean soil, that works. The other way that's done in a redevelopment is called a site-specific risk assessment. And then, all of the site is assessed in light of what they intend to build and they put in mitigation measures as appropriate and that all gets reviewed and approved by the ministry and it takes a long time either way. So, that's basically how it works.
Okay, and then my last two questions, yes, Councilor Van Passen.
Are you worried that if we gave them the property, they're going to take all the bad stuff, dump it on Lynn Street and give it back to us in 18 months and say, ah, we don't need it now?
No, I don't. I just thought it was a learning opportunity. I genuinely didn't know the answer to that, so thanks. Don't give them any ideas, Councilor Van Passen. I just wanted to make a comment, I guess, on the public record and look to Tricia and maybe Mohammed, that there was some letters that were not placed appropriately on the agenda. I do see that there's an email from you saying that they'll be moved over, but you, I just want to, I guess, draw attention to that on the public record. There were a couple of community members who had submitted letters with concerns with regards to the rezoning and they ended up on the Lynn Street file. They'll be moved over and taken care of?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And on page 45 of our agenda, there's a letter from Harry and Doug Gamble explaining concerns over ownership and the preservation of marine industrial. So, do we know who owns the properties? Who, can someone attempt to rezone a property they don't own? What's Norfolk County's next step with these letters?
Thank you. So, I will start to answer and Mohammed has additional information and the actual agents also will address this issue specifically when they speak shortly. So, just to answer the question, it's not unusual for applications to be filed by individuals that don't currently own the property. So, they're looking to purchase the property or whatever the case may be. There just needs to be appropriate consent by the property owner on the application when it's filed. So, in this instance, based on the information provided to us for these applications, that was the case. And then Mohammed had requested additional information to confirm the ownership and that the consent had been granted. We understand from information received recently that that might not be the opinion of the seller. And so, again, we have asked the agents to address this when they speak. But Mohammed, did you want to confirm the information that we had to make sure that, based on our knowledge, that consent had been granted?
Through the Chair, just to clarify, there are two parts here. One is the official plan, I mean, the application where, I mean, both the owner and the developer was, I mean, included in that application. In the zoning bylaw application that was filed in January 2020, it has only the developer's name. Although we inherited those applications from previous planners, but also, we tried to find out the reasons why it was submitted and approved, I mean, accepted. That application has the name with the developer and generally, as Tricia said, that it is not uncommon that we accept developers' application when they have agreements with the owner. In this particular case, we also sought the land title and we identified that there was an agreement of option to purchase. And based on that, we don't know surely the clear answer, but based on that, we can say that based on those agreements, we can accept applications of developers when they have a special agreement with the owner. Otherwise, I would probably also ask the applicant to clarify if there's anything to add.
Sure, I will go on and ask that or maybe another council member will when we get there. Does any council member want to interrupt me? I'm almost finished. Okay. So, I agree with some of the staff priorities as shared in the presentation, density, parking, certainly. We have a lot of balls up in the air here, specifically in Port Dover. We have the bylaw, we have the secondary plan study, we have a parking study ongoing. And so, a lot of this feels quite scary to the community. And I know that it's just a public hearing meeting today, but my question to staff is what are the plans moving forward? What's a bit of a timeline that we can put out and share with our community on this file? What can we expect to happen and will there be any other updates coming to council prior to a recommendation?
Through the Chair, I'll attempt to answer this one. The important thing today is to receive all of the comments. Therefore, then, staff and the applicant can have a fulsome idea of what all the issues are. I think we know that there are some pretty big ones here. So, this is not likely to happen very, very quickly. So, there is still, I would suggest, some time in the process. At the same time, we are proceeding with the overall secondary plan for Port Dover. An update was given to committee of council in August and the intent is to move forward early in the new year. There's also some update about the servicing that is pending and the interim control bylaw that's related to both of those studies. We definitely will have our eye on the timing of that work as it relates to the timing of this proposal moving forward, again, back to committee or council. There's probably more we could go on, but I don't want to confuse it too much. Although there are comprehensive county-led work that is ongoing, often we will have site-specific applications that people make. Some will wait until after those county-led studies are done, some will try and get ahead of that and some might actually happen simultaneously. The most important thing is to get all the issues and even what we hear from the secondary plan could have some influence on what some of the staff recommendation might be ultimately for this. But I think for the public, it's, and the applicant can speak to this, but I would suggest it's going to be several months.
Okay, thank you for that. And one of those other concerns that I should have mentioned, we had a discussion about, was concerning the Part Lot 2 and 3 on Chapman Street, 223. There's a lot of other questions I still would like to be answered. So, Part 2 of that long-winded question was, can we expect any further updates to come back to council prior to a recommendation on this file? It's just very complex. What is the timeline and plan from your department and your team?
Thank you. In discussions with the clerk and recognizing the enormous interest in all of the input and community comments that we've been receiving, our suggestion is we would come back with a special report for council and committee to address all of the issues before we bring any final recommendation report forward. So, that would be our suggestion and then that gives additional time for people to give their comments and have their comments addressed. So, that's our suggestion, to do a special council and committee meeting to address all of the information and feedback we've received so far.
Okay, thank you. I think that that would be very helpful. And do you need anything from committee today to have you do that or are you able to just come back with information?
I will look to the clerk to see if we need any specific direction to have that special meeting in advance of the final recommendation report.
Through you, Chair Martin. I'd suggest that if there was, we finished the public hearing portion prior to getting into any potential resolutions for further meetings or anything like that, just to ensure that we're done that portion.
Sure, but you would like it formalized from us when we go to receive this as information, if that's the wishes of committee?
Yeah, through you, Chair Martin, yes. If committee does want to hold another public hearing, usually there would be another staff report with a recommendation directly for approval, but if you would like another public hearing first, then that would be good to have in resolution.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Okay, that was all of my questions. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Mr. Burgess, he made a statement, Mr. Burgess, that the throughway through the development site would be privately owned but publicly accessible, right? So, right now, Lynn Street is a thoroughfare. I see they get 25 vehicles per hour or less in the morning and 35 in the afternoon. With that traffic, could it actually go through the development site then so that it doesn't impede people's traditional habits of taking that route?
Through the Chair to the council, sorry for any confusion. I was only talking about the pedestrian part, would be the privately owned and publicly accessible. I think the plans that the developer are putting forward would be essentially, they would have, like in other condominium developments, there would be a driveway into their condominium, which would be privately owned by the condominium, but the throughway would be no longer part of that. So, I apologize for any confusion on that. It was really just for the pedestrian walkway around the water.
Okay, I misunderstood you, sorry. Thanks.
Okay, seeing no further hands, I'll go back to my notes here. We have a lot of individuals that are registered to speak on this matter. I will call upon each of you individually and give you each your allotted five minutes. Please remain available after you are done to answer any questions of committee. To begin with, we will hear from the applicants. We have four individuals registered to speak for the applicant and first up is Andrew Haniford.
I believe he registered myself, Dana Anderson, as the planner on the file.
Okay, go ahead, Dana.
And I am hoping, I do have some slides and I was advised that I could share those with the committee, Madam Chair, if that's possible.
Sure, are they in our public, are they in our agenda?
If I can share a screen, I don't know. If not, I can certainly speak without them.
Sure, okay, so I guess sharing the screen is okay. I'm just wondering if they're in our agenda. Did you submit your slides to the clerk, Dana, prior to?
I believe Mr. Haniford did, but if not, I can share them now.
Yeah, that would be great if you could please send them so that if we don't have them, they're included, but otherwise?
Absolutely.
Oh, you know what? I think we've got Jacob putting them up on the screen for us, so you might not have to share a screen. Just give us a couple of seconds here.
Okay.
Okay, so we actually don't have them, so we'll get you to submit them to the clerk when you're finished, but if you go ahead and share your screen, that'll be fine. Thanks, Ms. Anderson.
Sure. Not a problem. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the committee, for this opportunity. Hopefully, you can hear me okay. I just wanted to start off by thanking the committee and staff for the opportunity for bringing this matter forward to the public meeting jointly with the road closure request. I think that's very important. Staff in their reports that are on your agenda have provided a lot of information, which I think is useful to provide you with an overview. And certainly, today, I'm accompanied by a number of members of our consulting team who can respond to questions and also provide comments in their allotted time. I wanted to start off by talking about the application in the context of an opportunity. And I know we've heard a lot about the road closure as being an element that's integral to the application, but when we started on this project, the one thing for me as a planner and working in many communities across Ontario is the indication in your official plan and your direction as a council for this particular property that talks about the importance of supporting a transition from the traditional marine industries along the Lynn River to a more diverse residential, commercial and tourism focus. And I think certainly, that goal, that direction can be achieved, given the unique opportunity that exists with this property. You know, this property's context, as you've heard, is the consolidation of two properties with the road closure and certainly, the additional development at 225 Chapman Street that requires the rezoning application. But we're really dealing with an application to amend the zoning for those three properties and specific to 230 Chapman Street and 2 Lynn Street to amend the official plan to allow for some flexibility to increase height at particular locations to accommodate a range of housing in the form of a low-rise building. And that facilitates a requirement to amend the plan to add those two to four additional stories as well as a requirement that would allow for residential-only development. Certainly, in looking at the site context and it's, again, it's been conveyed through the information presented, this is a site that is identified as a brownfield site and will require remediation as part of that development opportunity. It also will require consideration of the existing floodplain and that, again, is a very important element. And so, all of those things combined, we looked at the way in which to implement some of the policies in the plan with some of the amendments and implementing zoning for a conceptual site plan that we put forward. And again, I won't go into that in detail. It does provide for a full range of new housing to provide for added supply, much-needed supply for accessible housing in the community. And again, our conceptual And again, our conceptual plan is premised on two key elements to allow it to go forward and, and, and seek the opportunity that is available. And that includes work with the staff at the Long Point Region Conservation Authority, given that the 100-year floodplain applies and is regulated along a portion of the property. And we've been working with the Conservation Authority, and you've, you've seen the comments in relation to the site-specific requirements for this property. And as a result of the uses over time on that site, certainly we're seeking, given the changes that have occurred over time, we're seeking to, in essence, restore the natural slope of the river to reduce the flood conditions. We're actually looking to improve and seek restoration of that floodplain, incorporate appropriate setbacks from the natural hazards, and also make overall improvements to the integrity of that corridor. And I think that's critical as part of the redevelopment of this whole site to ensure that we can have, again, naturalization of that slope, restoration of that natural area, and the potential, again, with the Lynn Street closure, to incorporate public access along the riverfront. The ability to close Lynn Street and therefore consolidate the two properties, again, provides for a much more efficient use of the lands. It allows for the remediation of the entire site. As was noted, there are a number of conditions that are set out in the report, again, that we would work with the staff at the county to facilitate in terms of the relocation of services. And certainly, from the transportation analysis that was prepared, it demonstrates that there wouldn't be a negligible impact on adjacent roads as a result of, of that closure. And you all also heard about the opportunity, first and foremost, to provide for public access along the waterfront is a great opportunity with the overall redevelopment.
Pardon the interruption, but you have one minute remaining.
Sorry. So, so very quickly, I just wanted to talk about the application process. And actually, it caught me. One of the things you said, Madam Chair, and that was, you know, this, this is a lot of information. This is a very complex matter, and for the community, that can be seen as scary. And I, I want to assure the community that by no means do we want this planning process to be scary. We want it to be iterative. We want it to be open. We want it to be transparent. And we want to take the process and work through that with a number of items that staff has, have identified. We recognize it's a large site. We know there are other studies ongoing, including the interim control ball, including the Port Dover Secondary Plan Study that we've been participating in and will continue to do that. We held an open house with the community, got a lot of great questions. Been working with staff to provide responses to those questions and put that information forward. So I think I will close by saying that we want to ensure that we take the time to work with the community, with staff, with council on the technical matters that have to be addressed, to ensure that we can optimize this incredible opportunity for intensification of the site, to optimize the benefits to the community, to restore and naturalize the floodplain, and to really revitalize and, and provide the supply of much-needed housing in the community with great opportunities, as I mentioned, for public access to the riverfront. And so with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. And also, I know there are specific questions, I believe, that came through you, Madam Chair, that members of the team that are also available can respond. And I did forward sort of a brief overview with those slides with my speaking notes to the clerk, so you have those for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to pass it over to Counselor Huffman for some questions to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question, actually, my only question, is I noticed that you used the term accessible housing. And I was just wondering if you could elaborate on your definition and your terminology of that term accessible housing?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, through you to the counselor. In terms of providing for accessible housing, I'm referencing the fact that on the supply side, we're providing for a range of housing types. So we're providing for a form of street townhomes, a form of what's called stacked townhomes and back-to-back townhomes, as well as apartment units within low-rise buildings. So in terms of a range of housing, those forms would be more accessible to a broader range of members of the community based on their, their type and size, in terms of both affordability and in terms of both meeting demographic needs.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you describe to us this concept of underground parking? Is it at ground level for these buildings, or is it? Can you describe what you're planning to do with the parking for the residents that live in this site?
Sure. So in, in our proposed concept plan, we, we've looked at the provision of parking, save and accept the townhomes that would have driveways and garages in terms of the street townhomes. But for the multiple forms of development, we've looked at providing underground parking. And again, this, this leads to the opportunity to consolidate the two sites whereby a larger underground parking structure for shared underground parking based on the forms of development could be provided. So rather than providing individual underground parking between, underneath each building or each of the stacked townhome blocks, there's an opportunity to broaden that and to provide for underground parking of a much larger area, which assists in providing for, hopefully, only one level of underground parking. And so again, that, that extends into the, the benefits of integrating Lynn Street as part of the development, because it would allow for that type of an underground parking structure to be facilitated. I should also note, too, based on the change in, in grade in the site, that underground parking can be built into the grade. So in essence, in some cases, it's at the lowest level in some of the buildings, but actually at grade, say, facing west would be the first level of the actual building. Not sure I can describe that without showing that in pictures, but.
So just to clarify, underground parking, a level of underground parking, does that constitute one of the stories then? That's what I'm confused about.
It, it may in the buildings that would be constructed utilizing the grade. That, that is an option that we've looked at. And again, until we go into sort of detailed design, and, and this relates to, we can facilitate that if we're not dealing with the constraints of a public road. Once we hit the constraints of a public road, we, we don't have as much flexibility in that type of construction.
Thank you.
Any further questions? No? Okay, Ms. Anderson, I might pose to you the question that I asked of staff regarding the letter in the agenda, I believe on page 45, concerning ownership. If you prefer for me to ask that a little bit later, I can, but I'd like to pose it to all parties.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair Martin. I, I would only say that in my understanding of the Planning Act, there is not the requirement of the consent of the owner of a property for that, for a rezoning application. Having said that, it's also my understanding that on two of the properties, Shore Developments own both of those properties, and on the one property which is located at 225, they have the option for purchase on that property. And I would defer to others in the consulting team to respond further to that. And I believe all of that information has been provided to staff.
Sure, okay, so I should continue to ask that question as we go through the other speakers?
Yes, I, the, the only other, just with, with all due respect, I, I'm not sure that it's a planning issue based on the Planning Act allowance for an individual to pursue a rezoning application without ownership of the property.
Okay, thank you. Can you speak to any development history that the investment company and the applicants have outside of this particular file?
Through you, Madam Chair, I think that's best to ask for them. I know they have been engaged in a number of other developments in different parts of Ontario. So I, I would defer to Mr. McKeel or, or Mr. Brown to respond to that.
Sure, okay. And then my last question is, the report talks about sustainability and materials mentioned in the actual development. Can you elaborate on that any? I know it's still early, but are you able to share some of those details? Or, or preferences or conversations you've had with the developer?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. We, we have had discussions, again, where the plans at this point with the applications are at a conceptual level. But we did identify in our report the opportunities to provide for sustainable measures. And certainly, as staff indicated, we would continue to have discussions related to those more detailed design considerations based on the forms of housing. But certainly, there is, it, there is a commitment to undertake that as part of the more detailed process.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Any further questions to Ms. Anderson? Seeing none, I guess we'll move along. Mr. Phillips, that's up next.
Thank you.
Five minutes to speak, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Through you, Chair. This is Rajan Phillips. That's the reference you were making. I, I worked at Paradigm, and we did the traffic study. And as Dana has indicated, the traffic study analyzed the proposed development and four other area developments under existing and future traffic conditions. And other than one intersection at St. Andrews Street and Highway 6, all the other intersections are projected to work at satisfactory levels of service in the future. So overall, the development can be accommodated by the existing study area road system. There are no, the impacts are minimal or negligible. That, that would be my submission. And that, because there are no other issues, I don't see any reason to take up your time unless there are specific questions on the traffic study or anything related to traffic issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding the traffic study from committee? Seeing none. Okay, thank you very much. Actually, I have one, sorry. It may state this in the report, but I don't have it in front of me. What month was the study, did the study occur?
Well, the study occurred in, we completed in January 2020. One minute, I'll just check when we did the traffic counts, that, if that's the... Oh, we, we did the counts to, I think during the Labor Day weekend, to make sure that we had the maximum counts.
Okay, all right. Seeing no further questions or comments, thank you very much. And Mr. Brown is up next. Five minutes to speak, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Well, actually, I had registered for the Lynn Street application, so it was more relating to the traffic study with Rajan, who had just, who's just updated everybody on that. So I have nothing further to, to add to the Lynn Street application.
All right, thank you very much. Final call for any questions from committee to Counselor Michele. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, it just kind of occurred to me after we, we heard about the traffic study. So are we, is it, is it correct that the traffic study was conducted during one weekend?
No, we did the traffic counts during a weekend to obtain the summer ma, the seasonal peak hour traffic. And then we used those volumes to determine, they define the existing traffic conditions as they are, as possibly the potentially the worst existing scenario. And then we added to them the development traffic from the subject development, and also from four other study area developments, which are located. Only one of them is on Lynn Street. All the others are scattered throughout the study area. So that's the development traffic. Then we projected the existing traffic to future conditions. One horizon was 2024, when the development is, is reasonably expected to be completed. So we project the 2019 counts to 2024 and, and project what would be the traffic conditions in 2024. And that will include the development, the traffic from the subject development. And then we went another five years further after that to, to project traffic volumes in 2029, and we analyzed those. So based on all those three analyses, what we found was the intersection that may create some issues because of the shared lane is at St. Andrews and Highway 6. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank, thank you, it does. The only question I guess I have is, so, so some of these numbers are projected numbers, obviously, because you're going out to 2024. The actual traffic study that was conducted in all parts of Port Dover, what would be the, the total length in, in days or months or weeks of the study?
No, it's... All I can do, I, I'll explain the procedure that we typically go through when you do a traffic study. We analyze the weekday morning peak hour and the afternoon peak hour. And in this case, for Port Dover and communities where there is a significant summer seasonal increase in traffic, we analyze the Saturday peak hour during long weekends. So those are the three peak hours that we analyze for road capacity. And we collect traffic counts on a single day or two days over eight-hour period to get the peak hour traffic. We do not, so the, the area that we covered, it's, I don't know whether it was presented in our report, the traffic report, as well as the, the submission we made in support of Lynn Street closure. If I read out the intersections, maybe that may, that may be of some benefit. So the study area intersections include Chapman Street and Bridge Street, Chapman and Main, Market Street and St. Andrews Street, St. Andrews Street and Highway 6, then Lynn Market Bridge Street, that, that will be modified, Lynn Street and Chapman Street Patterson Street, Silver Lake Drive and Ann Street North, and Chapman Street and St. Andrews Street. That's the only signalized intersection. Those are the intersections that we analyze, which, which is reasonable to assess the impacts of the subject development on the study area system.
Thank you. And, and I understand that, but I, I guess I'm just also asking, I, I know in the report, and I, I know this is part of the staff report, but it indicates that 25 vehicles per hour in the AM peak period and 35 vehicles per hour in the PM peak period is considered low. What, if you're able to do this, what would be considered high?
Oh, I, I, I don't know if you, if you point me to the specific reference that make, I, I would be happy to clarify, but the, the roads, the road is, we, we determine the level of service based on the road capacity. So on most of these roads, the road capacity would be, say, 700 vehicles per hour on a single lane. So the, the volumes that, that typically come on, on the, on the existing traffic conditions, if you look at the volumes, they are mostly within that capacity. And that's where, when we say 25 or 30 are low, we, we wouldn't have made that statement typically. That's not the way we express level of service. So I'm at a, I'm somewhat at a loss to understand where that reference is coming from, with all due respect.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm referring to page three of 13 of the staff report. And, and I'm simply asking, you know, it, it says on the second paragraph that the traffic volumes on Lynn Street were determined as being low. I'm, I'm just trying to get some relative comparison information. What would be a high number if that's a low number? What would be a high number if that's a low number?
Oh, given that's a high number would be anything over 500.
That certainly clears that up, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was at a loss to understand, okay.
Sorry, maybe I could build on that. And is that just a blanket statement, that that's a high number? Or are there factors brought in to each community that you're looking at and the surrounding area of traffic? You pull all of those numbers in and then take an average? Or is that just a high-traffic number across the board equals 500 and up?
No, 500 would be typical. We generally speak in terms of traffic capacity and environmental capacity. So where in a collector arty road, the major function of the road is to carry traffic, the traffic capacity would be the higher one. But we talk of environmental capacity in residential areas, where the local road function is primarily to provide access and doesn't encourage through traffic. So there it could be lower, but 500 is a general number, we should be okay during an hour.
Thank you, it's a general, it's a general number, okay. All right, thank you very much for that information. Seeing no further questions, we will keep moving along here. The applicants have requested to speak to both the road closure and the planning reports. What about... Okay, so next we have, thank you. Next, we have Breakwater Investments. The corporation has registered six individuals to speak and have been advised that their group will be allotted five minutes in total. Okay, I guess we're ready for you, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Okay, so my name is Blair McKeel. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, I guess you've asked firstly, I know you're wanting what my experience is, so primarily, it's in the marine business, there's no doubt about that, but we have three or four investments, other ongoing developments. One is at 5135 Fairview in Burlington, which is a property that we own that's going through beside the Go Train to become a higher-density development, and we're doing that jointly with a large developer. We have other properties under development or starting under development in different areas, one being in Port Burwell that we're working through. And as well, we have property that will get redeveloped in Port Maitland. And so that's really, you know, that's about as much as I can tell you, apart from hiring good people to help me go through the process. We're not trying to take something away from the town here in doing this. It took 40 or 50 years for this to change, and probably I should have been coming to council with everything still on that property and the mess that it was, as opposed to now people actually walking down the road and seeing the river and how clean things are there, and potentially what that can be. And so I think that, at least from my perspective, we're committed to giving the waterfront back to the community. It's important to us that that happens, it's important to me that that happens. I grew up in the water, I understand the waterfront. The other part is that the small piece of road that we're asking for, it is important to us to make the development work because of how much floodplain is down below. And in my mind, there's two things you have to consider. Apart from maintaining that road, that road's going to cost about $800,000 to clean up. It's got a bitumen base in it that was there when it was built that has to be removed. So it's not like you're giving me something that's wonderful, it's not, it's got to be dealt with. I think that, in my mind, it's looking at the overall picture, not just a road, it's what comes out of the other end of this for the whole community at large. I think some of it is what I would call more cost-effective housing. The other part is this, that I believe that us developing this property at that location will only help drive a number of empty storefronts that we see today in the downtown core. Because people will either ride a bicycle or walk downtown and be able to go to restaurants, buy things and do things. And from an infrastructure perspective, density is a lot easier on infrastructure than non-density. So, you know, I guess I'm learning just as much as everyone here is over time, and I'm not saying I have all the answers. We're not here to take something away, we're doing our best to try and add value to the whole community, and that's really what we're focused on. And this site is not a pretty site. It has a lot of challenges, and the only reason we're asking for that road is to help make the whole thing work.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions to Mr. McKeel from committee members? I'm seeing none. I do have a couple for you. Thanks for sharing the development history, that was one of my questions in particular. Can you, so you're familiar with the community, obviously, you've purchased land here. Can you talk about your community involvement? And I ask that question because a lot of public concern comes from keeping historic value and characteristics and aesthetics and whatnot wrapped into development. So are you familiar with our community, and can you comment on that?
I guess that, you know, I've been going there since I was probably five or six years old. We base tugboats there, Nidromarine, which is a company that I'm involved with, has been there. So we've invested and spent a lot over decades in Port Dover, as well as many small communities across Lake Erie and across the Great Lakes. The, I think that, you know, just proof in the pudding, a couple, a month or so ago, we helped out, we seen that the theater is having issues, so we committed $100,000 for that. My wife and I are heavily involved in philanthropy in a lot of the communities where we live or work, whether it's hospices, hospitals, or anything like that. So I guess that, you know, and that's easy enough to pull that information up if you just look on Google or whatever you want to do, but really, for me, we're not trying to take away from something. I think that we're trying to bring value. I think giving the waterfront back alone brings a lot of value, but I'm also, I think we're also very open to listening to what everyone has concerns with. We're not here telling you, we know what you have to have, that's not what we're here for today. We're just trying to make something work so that it can add something to the community and make this site into something different than what it is or what it was. And we're also, in my mind, I think that whatever gets built there will have some sort of a nautical or sort of a maritime flavor and theme to it. I think that's important, that's what built Port Dover in many ways. And so I think it has to be done with a, not just a big ugly square buildings, I don't think that's what we're talking about, we're talking about something that has an aesthetic appeal and a whole thing that resounds around water and everything from fishing to boatbuilding to whatever really helped make Port Dover what it is today.
Okay, thank you for that. And just to be consistent, I've asked both staff and your consultant the question with regards to ownership. Do you have any comments that you'd like to add?
Sure. I own two of the three properties. We had a legal option on the third property, which we've let them know we're exercising, they were notified of that last week. And so we own both properties currently, and there's what's called a vendor-take-back on those properties. And just due to some ongoing issues with environmental, which was unforeseen from our side and was never told to us, and going through two years of watching them slowly just break the law and do what they were doing there to clean things up, it left me in a bad way. And it's nothing I expected. And I was kind and generous in trying to work through this whole thing with the principals. Basically, it took two and a half years on something you're supposed to take six months to get them off the site. And so this hasn't been easy for me or my family, and unfortunately, we've got millions in cleanup there to do, to put this into a residential utilization. From a commercial perspective, it's fine, it can continue on probably, but for what we want to do there, we've done the heavy lifting now. You have to get access to land to know what you've got underneath it, and the only way to get access to land is get all the junk off it. And many of you understand that, that's been that way for years and years. There's been no regard for the environment or what's going on, there's been just total disregard. And so now we're stuck with having to deal through this. So there is some issues around a VTB being held back until we resolve the environmental issues, but I do own the properties.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess you're fully aware of the information, it's all on the public record here with some community concerns and the questions posed to council, but I would also like to just maybe let you know that I think strictly residential there without commercial conflicting with our central business district is something that's positive to direct residential foot traffic up to the commercial business area. And certainly happy to see some development in the area. It's inevitable in our community, but I thought I would just leave you with those comments. Thank you very much for answering the questions. And final call to Counselor Columbus has a question for you.
Just thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McNeil, McKeel, can you share with me, we've had some notes here, and I've got three different names for this project here. One is Port Dover Developments, one is Shore Developments Limited, and one is Breakwater Investments. How are those three affiliated?
So Breakwater Investments is my family holding company, which manages my investments and a lot of our assets. And so it owns wholly Shore Developments, and this project is being done under Shore Developments.
So there's, the Port Dover Developments that I read somewhere has nothing to do with your business involvement?
It's probably another entity that we own. We changed the name is what we've done, I believe. I own a number of companies, unfortunately, so I don't know exactly, but we changed the name of Port Dover Developments to Shore Developments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no further questions, so next we have, thank you, Mr. McKeel. Next, we have Marg Creighton. Marg, you have five minutes, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining. Marg, are you there? Maybe we'll move along, and I'll check again with you. Jim Dover.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm here now.
Oh, hi, Marg, okay, perfect. Go ahead, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Okay, thank you. Just representing the Port Dover Waterfront Preservation Association, I would just like to say that since our mandate is public access to the waterfront, we are quite delighted that a public trail is a consideration in this development. And since tourism is our main industry, access to the water is extremely important. And so we just wanted to say basically that we are thrilled that this is a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marg. Any questions to Marg from committee? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Marg. Next, we have Jim Dover. Jim, you have five minutes, and I'll let you know when you have one remaining.
He removed his name.
Oh, we've lost Jim, okay. Thank you. Rick Fess.
Hi, I really don't have any comments, I'm just here to listen, and thank you, everyone, for the information.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Next, we have Marion Gadsby. Marion, are you there? Okay, Marion, we can't hear you if you're on the line, I'll check back with you in a minute, and I'll move along. The next individual is Judy Malpass.
Hi.
Hi, Judy, go ahead, we can hear you, you've got five minutes, and I'll let you know when there's one remaining.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate being able to talk with everyone today. My concern is the closing of Lynn Street, and I think this is going to cause more problems with traffic in the future for the county. I mean, you get complaints all the time, there's no parking, but closing this as a public road will have a huge effect on this area. I live on Prospect Street, that road, I know, is used more than 25 people per day. Your parking study, I'm sorry, but your timing to analyze this, in my opinion, I think is incorrect. We have events that go on, other than COVID, all year, we have hundreds of thousands of people that come here, including a Friday the 13th, and we're well over, what, 100,000? On the busiest times. So your traffic situation is, I'm sorry, I don't think it's correct, but anyways. You know, I'm in favor of this development, and I think this is going to be truly spectacular when it is finished, provided we're at the six-story height maximum. You know, developing this, you know, I understand, and I can see the developer trying to close this road to create a beautiful area for his development. But the thing is, you're adding between approximately 600 and 800 people coming in in this area, which is, you know, when you look at it, isn't overly huge. And now, you want to close a road? You have to have that road in there for those people to come in and out of those buildings. So why not make it a public road? If you change it to a one-way road and put a sidewalk in, people on one side aren't necessarily going to follow the arrows and keep it as a one-way. You bought the property with a county road in it. You should be able to develop your buildings around that area. I mean, the water access is great, what you want to do, I think, is terrific. I mean, over the years, I know the Gamble Shipping Yard has taken over sort of more than probably what was allowed, but anyways, all of that's cleaned up, I give them credit for cleaning it up, and now we're going to have a beautiful development down there? It's great. But you also have to take into consideration that people who live here, most of the people who are in the planning departments, whatever, you don't live in Port Dover. We live here, we use that road, and I think it should continue to stay open. You've, you've got the residents going in and out, you have a curve going over the bridge here, these aren't your standard straight roads. So you've got 600 to 800 people coming out on the curves, and you've got businesses at the far end. People go through that road to go into the park, down to the beach, carrying things and going around on a walkway, that's not going to cut it, I'm sorry. But anyways, if you can put your, and today was the first time I realized that you were considering putting underground parking in through the whole area, which will, which you can still put a road over top underground parking.
Judy, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. You could have your whole area as underground parking, you could make it so part of it's public parking and charge for it. So anyways, I'm just, I'm thankful I can give my opinion, and hopefully, we can continue to work together with the resident support Dover, the county, and the developers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions to Judy from committee, Counselor Michele, and then Columbus?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Judy, just to correct one thing at the very beginning of your remarks, and because of some of my previous questions, I've become a bit of an expert on traffic studies. The, I believe the consultant said the traffic was 25 vehicles per hour, not per day.
Okay, sorry, my error, thank you.
Counselor Columbus.
Yes, I was just going to point that out as well, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions from committee? Okay, seeing none. I will move along. Next, we have James Muth. You have five minutes, and I'll let you know when you have one remaining.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks very much for hearing me. I'm the owner of the property at 35 Bridge Street, and I'm also representing my father, who's the owner of the property at 39 Bridge Street. 39 Bridge Street is also, sorry, there's some background noise there, somebody in the middle? Sorry, okay, that's better. Yeah, 39 Bridge Street, which is my father's house, which is also known as 214 Market Street, so that is on the corner of Bridge and Market Streets. I did send a letter to be considered by the council, it didn't make it in. Did the council receive the letter? There was one from my niece and my father as well, did those get included anywhere?
I def, yeah, they may be added into our amended... I def, yeah, they may be added into our amended pack, sorry, our package after the fact. I definitely recalled seeing it come into my email, and the clerk is just checking. So why don't you continue to chat with us while the clerk?
Okay, I'll do my best to summarize.
Actually, you know what? I see them in the amended package, so we have them.
Okay, thank you. We have two main concerns. One concern is the closure of Lynn Street. I noted from the virtual open house, and it's been expressed here again today, and it's also in the staff report, saying that the closure of Lynn Street will not have a significant negative impact on adjacent roads and traffic. So we completely disagree with this statement. Lynn Street is a very busy street, not only for motor vehicles, but also for pedestrian traffic and cyclists as well. Not only that, but it is a natural artery from the north approach to Port Dover via the Cockshot Road, right up to the traditional center of the town, which is Powell Park. And taking that away is not in keeping, number one, with the traditional layout of the town, but it's also taking away, and that's my next point about this, is there is valuable overflow parking here. It's been alluded to as well. The main events that happened, I'm sure where the traffic study didn't take those into account, things like Friday the 13th, the summer festivals, and any weekend in the summertime, you'll see Lynn Street being used for overflow parking, and it can accommodate a lot. And I think that's one thing that hasn't been taken into consideration. So it does not benefit the town as a whole, based on those two things, the traditional flow of traffic up to Powell Park, and also, as has been expressed before, it's a busy street, but also because of the parking that it accommodates as well. Finally, with respect to the closure of Lynn Street, it cuts off the neighborhood of Bridge and Market Streets from the owners that are there and have been there for a long time, taxpayers, community folks and community leaders, and the Royal Canadian Legion is there as well, and it cuts that off as well. My grandfather, who was in that house on 39 Bridge, 214 Market, he was a town councillor, he was the president of the Legion, and that home has been in the family for several generations. So it doesn't take any consideration into that. So that's the closure of Lynn Street. And our second issue is the location and height of the proposed buildings on the west site.
Pardon the interruption, but you have one minute remaining.
We feel inappropriate to the surrounding neighborhood. They devalue the properties along Northwest Bridge Street, and they prevent the enjoyment of our properties. Building C especially is proposed to be six stories and 15 meters from Bridge Street. All you have to do is stand there at the corner of Bridge and Market Streets, pace off 15 meters from Bridge Street, and look at my father's house there, and you'll see how ridiculous a six-story building 15 meters from there would look, especially a house that's been there since 1835, by the way. So we believe there should be no building there at all, and the other buildings on the west side should be maximum four stories, in keeping with, again, the neighborhood and the tradition of the neighborhood. So just, and just with respect to the applicant's view that the closure will continue to be, if he doesn't get the closure, that the site will continue to be contaminated and remain probably marine commercial, I don't understand the logic. It sounds like someone is trying too hard to push the issue here. Why can't the development plan be altered to include Lynn Street? So why won't it continue to be contaminated and remain probably marine commercial? Why can't it be changed in accordance with the requirements of the community? So again, just to summarize, closure of Lynn Street is significant on the community, and it has a negative effect on traffic and parking, and the height and locations of the buildings on the west side, especially Building C, is completely inappropriate for the community. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, James. Any questions from committee members? Seeing none. Next, we have Brian Ogden. Brian, you have five minutes, and I'll let you know when there's one minute remaining.
Madam Chair and Counselors, while I support development of the site, I do not believe the current proposal is in the best interest of the community. The ongoing virus has had quite an impact on the way we all view business, but a proposal of this significance requires wide and deep consultation to ensure that everybody in the community has an opportunity to provide input. Density, your overall density is too high at 375 units, including the two six-story buildings and the eight-story building. This will have a major impact on the area, will set a precedence for future development. There is a key decision to be made. If approved, estimated, we will have a river line with towers blocking the waterfront view for all except those who own the units. We'll end up looking like other communities where generic development occurs. We'll be out of place considering surrounding development and the nature of our town, floodplains. It's quite surprising to see the suggestion that they can fill in the floodplain. The justification is very thin, harken back to a previous period in which they creatively state that part of the area was out of the regulated zone. Understand the conservation authorities stated that lands in the floodplain cannot be developed. Parking, as we all know, there's an existing parking problem in town. Every applicant wants a reduction of parking standards so they can develop more land at a higher density. Justification uses examples in large cities, which have transit, and numerous services close by that can be accessed without a car. They make the same old statements, the seniors only have one car, and suggest that people will ride, share, walk, and bike. On the court I live on, there are nine homes, all seniors, eight have two vehicles, and more if you include all the toys. Do not support this request, as all it means is the local taxpayer ends up picking up a tab for finding more public parking to meet the demand. Do them, do not let them make their parking issue ours. Traffic, unfortunately, the traffic study does not address the operational and safety issues associated with pedestrian and the road access to and from Chapman. As you know, Chapman, Prospect, one of the main arterials in and out of town. On this part of the road, you have two 90-degree curves and a very short section between the two as it crosses the dam. There's also a pedestrian crossing at a skew. The sightlines are very poor, speed's high, and it's dangerous now, let alone when you have, on the development traffic, from this proposal. And the one at the dam, the majority of the people using this area are seniors and children. Lynn Street, as you know, taxpayers of the county have paid for the road, and council has stewardship of its management. I oppose the sale of the road as it is, as it is used as a key transportation access to the downtown for people who live north of the dam, and that's a fairly substantial number of people in town. Road provides a pleasant, a pleasant walkway, access to downtown and a lakefront, and providing views of the river. The applicant appears to suggest they will make trade-offs of the road for access along the river, but the application and supporting material really contains no commitments or details. Trading off the road for access along the river and development of the site as proposed is not a good deal for residents of Port Dover. Land below the floodplain cannot be developed and has room for a path. Lynn Street is key to this development, should not be casually sold off. Broader consultation with residents is required. Expect more people bike and walk along this road than they drive. That really hasn't been taken into account in the various studies. In summary, I'm not opposed to the redevelopment of these lands. The trick is finding the right level of development in keeping with the unique nature of our community. I hope we can do better than the current proposal. I think the current status of the lands is appropriate and would allow buildings of four stories high. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions to Mr. Ogden? Okay, seeing none. Next, we have Mark and Nicola Roberts. You have five minutes, and I'll let you know when there's one minute remaining. Mark and Nicola, are you there? Okay, I will come back to you at the end. I'm going to move along to Catherine Vance. Catherine, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead. You've got five minutes, and I'll let you know when there's one minute left.
Okay, I only want to speak to the council and developer regarding affordability, and that is, I would think, in a development of this magnitude, and in keeping with the philanthropic practices of the developer in the past, has any consideration been given to allocating some of the units to social housing, say, 1 in 50 units?
That's a question you're asking of council today, Catherine?
Yes. Has council ever put any, put any of that requirement such as that into any developments?
That's a good question for our planning staff. It's certainly something that gets discussed around the table with every development, but typically, that's probably a better question to ask of our planning, planning staff, or our CAO, who's not here. Further to that, I think that that's something that would be ironed out later on in the development as well. At this point in time, the developer is looking at the viability of the density and fill on the plan right now, and so I don't have an answer for that in particular. However, I can say that that is definitely a concern for council with any development that comes forward. If any other council members wish to add something to that, you're in agreement. Counselor Michele?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just to add to your comments to Ms. Vance. Council often, with many developments, is told that the housing is affordable, and often, there is a bit of a distinction between what developers mean by affordable. I think that, you know, for many counselors, we usually ask the question about affordable housing as being that type of housing that could be geared to low-income people, and sometimes developers use the word affordable to indicate that they are talking about reasonably priced market rates for housing. And so that is, that is a big consideration, and you are quite right. Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add, Catherine?
No, I just wanted to raise the question.
Okay, no, that's a great question, and consider it well received on our end. Okay, without any further committee member questions, I'll move along. We have, sure, I've still got one more. Robert Vary. Robert, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, you've got five minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead. You have five minutes, and you can chat away. I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
I live across the river from the development proposal. I read the 16-page submission by McNauton, et cetera, for the construction of 375 residential units, and it reminds me of a quote used by my old economic and development professor. And I think I've heard this echoed throughout the day. The quote was, "Shoot for the moon and see what you get." There doesn't seem to be any staging or phasing in of the suggested plan. There's, there seems to be little respect shown for the waterfront preservation with the suggestion of the three, six, and eight-story high apartment buildings along the river's edge. And the shotgun approach used in the application really doesn't show much respect for the time that the county has to spend reviewing this thing. And I think I've heard that echoed throughout the afternoon, too. And it seems like it's a premature proposal, not well thought out, and I'm hoping that it has to go around again, and maybe he can come forward with a little better thought-out plan for the, you know, for the property. That's my, just my comment on it. I'm not, I'm not against necessarily the proposal, but it needs to be gone over again and maybe come back with a better idea. Anyways, thank you for letting me comment.
Okay, thank you very much for your submission. And if you missed it earlier, there was a discussion with our planning team about doing, doing just that, having an update, having some answers to a lot of the community concerns and questions, and having that come back to council as a second public hearing. So hopefully, council will endorse that suggestion and will do just that. Are there any?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any committee questions to Mr. Vary?
Okay, thank you very much for your submission.
Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go back up to the top of my list here. We missed Mr. Dover. Jim, are you on the line?
Having some answers to a lot of community concerns and questions and having that back to council as a second public hearing, so.
Okay, and what about Marion? Marion Gadsby, are you on the line?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions to Mr. Vary? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go back up to the top of my list here. We missed Mr. Dover. Jim, are you on the line? Okay, and what about Marion? Marion Gadsby?
I think we have a little bit of a delay here.
I'm on the line now, yes.
Okay, Marion, go ahead. You have five minutes. I'll let you know when you have one remaining.
So there's actually a time delay between what I am seeing and what I am getting on my thing there. I think that's been part of the problem.
Yeah, we can just hear a little bit of an echo here ourselves. But go ahead, you've got five full minutes, and begin when you're ready.
Okay. Marion Gadsby? I think we have a little bit of a delay here. Okay, Marion, go ahead. You have five minutes. I'll let you know when you have one remaining.
Well, I wasn't going to really say all that much. I'm in basic, are you hearing me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'm, yeah.
Go ahead, you've got five full minutes.
Okay, I sent in a fairly long comments section by email. I'm basically in favor of the development, but I'd be interested in finding out whether at least pedestrians could use the, through the development, because not all of them can go down to the river and back up again.
Sure, are there any other questions or comments or concerns? You can use your time up here, and then we can answer you at the end.
But I'd be interested in finding out whether at least pedestrians could use the.
Yeah, I'm wondering if somebody in the background has their TV or another, a second device not muted, and that's why we're hearing this delay. So Marion, if you have any other comments or questions, go ahead and ask them now, otherwise we can comment on your question.
No, that's it, so.
Okay. Yeah, from my understanding, as it's printed now, again, staff are probably better to comment on this, but that is the POPs space, the privately owned, publicly operated space. So the intent would be that it is open to the public, but again, further to some of my questions earlier, that's something that I think we would want ironed out and put in writing.
No, I have no other comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, from my understanding, as it's printed now, again, staff are probably better to comment on this, but that is the POPs.
Through the chair to council, this is Lydia, and in answer to Ms. Gadsby's question, with respect to the POPs proposal, what is shown on the mapping in the report is truly just something that is proposed, and I think we realize that the configuration of this property will change when it's finally developed, and any public walkway, pedestrian corridor would have to meet all of the current and future accessibility requirements. So those are things to be thought about when we're considering the POPs, the POPs-proposed walkway.
Okay, thank you, Lydia. I'm going to circle back one final time. Mr. Dover, I think we had a bit of a delay. Are you on the line? Okay, how about Mark and Nicola Roberts? And have I? And have I missed anyone else that's on the line that wishes to speak? Okay, I think we're all finished. Are there any final questions from committee members? Seeing none. Now, we'll go back to the applicants. I would ask that you keep your comments brief, but if there's anything in response to the public speakers you would like to relay, we will hear it now.
Thank you. It's Dana Anderson, if you can hear me. Just wanted to thank everyone for the comments today. I've been taking notes. And as noted in the staff report, there are a number of issues and items to be addressed. And we look forward to working with the community and council and staff on this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing on these matters? Moved by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Michele. All those in favor? And that's carried.
So, there are two recommendations in the staff report. So, I don't know if committee would want to go on and consider them or propose an alternative?
Okay, so, we have the two... Oh, that's good. Thank you, Andy. We have the two recommendations that are proposed in the staff report. I don't know if anyone wishes to move them directly as printed or put forward an alternative motion. But as a reminder, we discussed a second public hearing option, and that is not printed in the recommendations presently. Looking for some direction here. On page 14 of our agenda, we have a motion, the recommendation. Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We agreed to merge the two for purposes of the presentation, to see how it fits together. Now, we've got to un-merge them, and we've got to deal with one separate from the other one. Or I would suggest this, and maybe the clerk could comment on this. But, you know, separate the two now, and we go back to... Like, one is a report, CS 2017 is specifically the closure of the street. The other port is a planning report that we had a public meeting for. So, I would suggest you deal with the one.
Yep, I'm there and ready. That's the recommendation on page 14. Does anyone want to move that? Counselor Huffman will move that. And again, I'm reminding my colleagues, unless I have to jump chair here and pass it over to Counselor Rabbits, that we will need to add a recommendation about a second public hearing. Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no problem with allowing our staff, and possibly even the mayor, help on some discussions to see... Like, as long as there's a street and a sidewalk there that's accessible to the public, I don't really care who owns the dirt underneath it. So, I'm more than willing to let our staff enter into discussions on what possible things they could negotiate that both sides would be agreeable to, and bring them back to council, and bring that back forth as another public meeting. And I think that's what the recommendation says, that all we're doing is allowing staff to proceed to work with the developer on a potential framework for the purchase and sale. And maybe I've got to ask the CAO if, would that be attainable to bring that report back to council and present it at a public meeting in October of 2020?
Our CAO is still not in the room with us, so I'm just kind of going off of our clerk's comments that he would like it formalized. So, maybe, I'll let you speak to that, Andy.
Yeah, through you, Chair Martin. So, the one thing that is important to give a distinction for staff is if you want the report to come to CIC, and we'll hear deputations on it, and then we'll have that subsequently approved by council, that's one route to take. But if you're asking for another public meeting, then that means we hold another public hearings committee on it. And it's a bit different. It's a bit easier for people to register, but it also adds an additional potential timeline. Because if you're hearing the next public hearings meeting, you won't necessarily be hearing the final version of the report. It could delay it another month or two in that consideration. So, there's two kind of different options. The option I think staff would go for would be to bring this to report to a CIC, both this one and the next one to a CIC with some recommendations. And that if the public wanted to participate, they would have to file deputation requests. That would be probably easier for staff and easier to get it done in quick timelines. But if council wants to put another public hearing, that's your option.
My preference, I guess, thanks for that information, Andy. My preference in chatting with our planning department prior to this, when the agenda came out, and again today, is that there are ample community concerns. And additionally, COVID has really amplified that. We can't get the public here. We're having technical difficulties with the speakers. So, it is my preference to have some of these questions answered at a second public hearing meeting prior to a recommendation coming forward. There's a lot of unknowns. I want to continue to work with the development community. I certainly don't want to upset anyone by delaying or pushing this out. But I think that this is the best way to iron out these concerns, have clear answers on the table, and make an informed decision. So, my preference would be a second public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I think that's where I'm coming from as well. I think I've used that terminology before. You know, the developer's looking for that wink, wink, nod, nod, that we're willing to at least look at it. When they have that sort of wink, wink, they will fine-tune some of the plans of their proposal, because it's a totally different proposal, whether it's all one parcel or not one parcel. So, you know, they might bring something that's quite different as a second proposal, knowing that they've got that, a different configuration they would be allowed to use or that type of thing, and to enter into discussions with them. And bring that back to a full public meeting, I think that is the right way to go. So, if the clerk could advise me in some way to add an extra bullet point to the recommendation that's printed on page 14, and bring it back to a public hearings committee meeting in October of 2020? And then, the public hearings committee, because this is not a planning thing, it would be a recommendation to council, so somebody would also have another kick at the can, wouldn't they?
My only recommendation is that we might not put in October. If this is a big enough issue, we might... I guess, we could hold a special public hearings committee in October if it's necessary. I just don't know if the staff timelines for getting something done. Usually, it's, you get a staff report, and it takes three weeks to approval. So, we're already getting towards the first of October in terms of staff's timelines.
Yeah, I would hope that staff would continue to treat it as a priority. And I say that fairly confidently, because I did have a really great discussion with both Tricia and Brandon on Friday, where this came up. So, I just would prefer that it states "public" hearing. Okay, so are you... Right. Okay, Counselor Van Passen, so are you seconding the motion and asking Counselor Huffman if she's okay with your amendment? Are you okay with that amendment? Yes, she is. Okay. So, moved by Counselor Huffman, seconded by Counselor Van Passen. Do you want to read it out with the extra language?
That staff report, CS 2017, proposed closure and conveyance of part of Bridge Street and part of Lynn Street, Plan 207 Port Dover, be received as information, and that the comments received as part of the public meeting be considered in a future recommendation staff report, and that staff continue to proceed to work with the developer on a potential framework for a purchase and sale agreement, and to bring to a public hearing in 2020.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, I'm just wondering if this would be a good time to have the CAO comment on staff timelines for bringing it back in 2020? Through, sorry, and I apologize for dealing with another matter. Through the chair to the counselor, yeah, the intent was to bring back an update to council for October 2020. My only concern is, if it's still active negotiations, we would probably not, we'd have to be very careful on what we bring to a public meeting versus what may have to go in camera. That council may decide to keep certain parts of the negotiations, if they're still live negotiations, in an in-camera process. But I have no problem bringing back an update at that point in time. And if the negotiations are completed and all the matters are there, then council, you know, then council can waive its right and deal with it in an open session at that point in time.
And for the record, I think we're going to make the same amendment here on this next recommendation, so that there's public information coming forward on the rezoning as well. Okay, so, that being said, any further comments, questions, debate? Seeing none. All of those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. We'll go on to our second recommendation on page 57. Moved by Counselor Rabbits, seconded by Counselor Columbus, that report PD 2048, Public Hearing Report for OPN PL 2019 014 and ZPNL 2020 019 be received for information, and that public comments and technical comments received as part of the statutory public meeting be considered in a future recommendation staff report. And does a council member wish to add the same language concerning public hearing? Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like that added, because, again, depending on the negotiations, discussions that staff will be having with the developer on potential changes with Lynn Street, they could be bringing back, again, a different sort of tweaked version of this plan. And it wouldn't be fair to the public that what they got to see one time, and then we would approve something later on that's totally different, that's not fair. So, let's bring it back in conjunction with the other staff report at a later date for another, at another public hearings committee meeting.
And Counselor Rabbits and Counselor Columbus, are you okay with those amendments?
I'm good with that.
Both are?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay. Andy, do you want to read that one out for the public record?
That report PD 2048, Public Hearing Report for...
Rob Vary.
Is now exiting.
...PL 2019 014 and ZPNL 2020 0019 be received for information. And the public comments and technical comments received as part of the statutory public meeting be considered in a future recommendation staff report at a public hearing in 2020.
Counselor Columbus.
So, there's got to be some major tweaking, I think. When, we heard a lot about the density of this development, and we heard a lot about the height of the buildings, eight stories, six stories. When does all that, Mr. Clerk, when does all that get resolved in this process with respect to heights of buildings and the density?
I know planning staff is likely still on the line. I don't know if they'd want to do it. But this motion reads that the next reports will have final recommendations in them. So, they would be the, it would be not just for information, it would be a full final recommendation report at the public hearing.
So, we'd have a more detailed, accurate plan of what the developer wants to do? Whether he's still going to stick with eight-story building?
Sorry, Counselor Columbus, if I can interrupt here. I think that that actually needs to be corrected. So, what we've done is we've added another public hearing, just like today, on the Lynn Street topics of discussion, and allowing staff to continue that dialogue with him. As for the rezoning, we need, we would also like for that information, all of the questions and concerns we've talked about today, we would like for that to come back as a second public hearing due to COVID, due to the complexities on this file. So, I think we want to eliminate that the recommendation comes forward. We would rather see the public hearing come forward with those questions being answered and more information provided to council before we're expected to make a decision based on the recommendation. So, I think we're looking to remove recommendation. And again, I just will run that by mover and seconder, Counselor Van Passen. Go ahead.
I think you can drop the 2020 off of that last amendment. This will come when it comes after they're done the other part. I wanted to push the other part. This one might not make it in October or November or December, right? I'm not going to put the pressure on planning staff to do something until the other part of the puzzle.
Right, and that being said, we still do want to treat it as a priority. I want, we want the development community to know that. But, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Rabbits, you want to...
Thank you, through you. I saw that Mohammed Allen wished to speak, our staff member.
Yeah, through the chair, we just wanted to clarify a few things that Counselor Martin just already clarified. So, we're, we are good. And that also helps if we don't have the specific timing in there, because the issues might take some time to resolve.
Perfect.
So, that's helpful.
Okay, so we've removed that the recommendation's coming forward, and we've inserted that there will be another public hearing, but we haven't put a date on it. So, staff, okay, great. So, sorry, one final time, Counselor Rabbits, given those changes, are you okay with...
Sorry, I turned my microphone and cut you off. Yes, through you, I'm okay with those amendments. I think honestly, it's prudent that we have the Lynn Street conversation and likely have that public hearing first as a point of order, so that we can then have the zoning conversation later. I think it's, is a bit of a chicken and egg situation. But honestly, if the developer doesn't have direction with Lynn Street, they're really not going to be able to move forward with the application as planned with regards to the zoning. So, let's have that conversation first, and maybe have that information put as sort of a priority. And then, we'll see that full development coming back for rezoning once maybe we've dotted all those i's and crossed those t's. So, I'm good with the idea.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Columbus, you're the seconder?
The seconder, I agree. It's important that we get this major development right. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, any further debate, comments, questions? Seeing none. Call the vote, those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. I guess, if I could just provide a couple of comments based on this. It's a large-scale development in my community. And, you know, we talk about development all the time across the county, and certainly in Port Dover as it grows. We've learned from the secondary plan that it's projected to triple in size, Port Dover, and Ward 6 and the next, well, certainly Port Dover in the next 20 years. It's no longer a concept that we talk about. It's a reality that's knocking on our door. But the development and change in our communities is inevitable. And so, Counselor Columbus, I think you said it perfectly, that we need to get it right. And the scale, the characteristics, the dynamics, they can remain very much in our control. While I don't support maximum density and infill, I'll continue to entertain discussions with the development community to make sure that we have all of those elements checked off appropriately. And as long as our development community continues to recognize and respect charm, history, characteristics, heritage, and so on of our community, then I think our community will remain in control of what our development looks like. So, thanks for, everyone, for participating today. Thank you for, my colleagues, for your questions and support. And I look forward to developing appropriately as we move forward. Okay. Okay, let's take a quick break before we move on to the next report. 15 minutes? Longer?
Judy Malpass.
Okay, so we'll take a quick break, because we have other applicants waiting on the line. So, let's just take a quick 10-minute washroom break, and then we'll come back. It's 5:38, so 5:50.
Okay, thanks through the chair. So we have Fabian here is going to introduce and present this item.
Hi, so my name is Fabian, sir. I'm a planner here with Norfolk County. I've prepared the following information report before you. This application was submitted by Agent Tom Klein on behalf of the property owners. The application is to rezone the subject lands from agriculture zone to handler residential zone and request relief of 7.97 meters from the required minimum lot frontage of 30 meters to permit a lot frontage of 22.03 meters. The property is located at the end of Evan Street in Port Ryersia. The property currently contains an existing greenhouse, barn, and two single detached dwellings. This application will bring the subject lands into conformity with the Norfolk County official plan, a subsequent application in order to sever the proposed law upon approval of the zoning bylaw amendment. Regarding this application, I have received a letter. The letter outlines concerns that a resident has raised. I have spoken with the resident and will address their concerns further in the subsequent recommendation report for council decision. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I believe the agent, Tom Klein, is available via Microsoft Teams as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of committee on the report to staff? Councilor Columbus?
Yes, the planner says there's a letter. When will we actually see this letter of concern?
So I can provide that for you at any time. I printed it off with me, I actually just received it. So I can provide that at any time.
Sure, I'm maybe, I think maybe some of the concerns would be helpful to know now if there are questions that might lead council to some other questions, I wonder? Do you have it handy, or?
Yeah, through the chair, so the letter that was received was after the staff report was done. However, because it was received by the time of today's meeting, it is part of the official public record and will be appended to the following, the follow-up report. However, Fabian can outline the key items raised in the letter right now, if that helps.
Sure, that would be great, thank you.
Through the chair. The resident was questioning the intent behind why they were attempting to amend the zoning bylaw to change it from agricultural to residential for what purpose, as well as questions surrounding the entranceway regarding the frontage, if there was a potential future property owner of the farm or the residential parcel, how that would work in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that information. All right, I'm not seeing any questions from committee to staff, so we have the applicant and agent registered to speak. Mr. Klein, you can go ahead when you're ready. You have five minutes, and I'll let you know when you have one minute remaining.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
I can, thank you.
I certainly won't be five minutes. I would have liked to have addressed the objection earlier. If I may just address that at the moment, there are two other accesses to this property along Clarence Street. If you go to map two of your, on your agenda of your report, you'll see that there's access to the property on Clarence Street, and there's also access to another family member who owns the property for the Hilltop Drive on Open Access Street. Simply this application, all it's doing is implementing the official plan. The planning rationale has already been determined, given the official plan designation. We're simply implementing the official plan and requesting a reduction in the, in the frontage from the 100-foot frontage to 66 feet as per the road allowance. Subject to that, the planning report's pretty comprehensive. You will note that there are no negative comments filed with the, as a result of the circulation. I would be pleased to respond to any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Klein. Are there any questions from committee to Mr. Klein? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Klein. Are there any questions from committee to Mr. Klein? Okay, I'm seeing none. May I have a motion to close the public hearing? Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Geisens, all those in favor? That's carried.
Madam Chair, if I may raise an issue, when will the bylaw formally come before council?
Sorry, I missed that. When is, when is the? Could you repeat your question for me, Mr. Klein?
Through the chair, that's the answer being the following council meeting, so September 22nd.
Okay, does someone wish to move the staff recommendation on page one? Where is it? I've lost it. 92? What did you say? 182, thank you. On page 182, or propose an alternative? Counselor Columbus?
So move the recommendation to staff.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Taylor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Klein and staff. We're going to move along to staff report PD 20-45. An application has been received to add a special provision on the subject lands to add a farm machinery and equipment repair business as a permitted use within agricultural zone on the subject lands. Megan Smith and Bob Jacobs and Agent Bram Van der Hubel of Stonecrest Engineering have put forth the application affecting the lands described as 810 St. John's Road West. Staff, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Through the chair. This application was submitted by Agent Bram Van den Hubel on behalf of the property owners. The application is to add a special provision on the subject lands to add a farm machinery and repair equipment business as a permitted use within the agricultural zone on the subject lands. The property is roughly 7,000 square meters in size and fronts onto the north side of St. John's Road West in Simcoe. The lands contain a single detached dwelling and a detached accessory structure. For this application, there were three letters of non-objections that were signed in support of the application. I have attached these letters as appendix B on the report. The agent is away on vacation, but has provided his colleague Natalie, who I believe is on teams, and can assist in answering any questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from committee to staff? Counselor Columbus?
Yes, I hope staff could answer this. Where has the applicant been operating up until today?
So the applicant, through the chair, sorry. The applicant has been, it's my understanding that they have been operating on a different parcel, but then they, they wanted to bring the business as kind of a home-based business, but at the same time, they wanted to use a property that could support that business and have the space at the same time. To be honest, I'm not sure if they are currently living at this property or not. I think that would be a question that would be better for the agent.
Any further questions to staff? Counselor Van Passen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question, well, a comment to staff. On page 189, the site features, it says it fronts on the north side of St. John's Road. Last time I checked, that was the south side that they're on. So I wonder if you could amend that in the report, please?
Through the chair, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for that, Counselor Michelle, I mean, Pan Passen. Good catch. Any further questions? Seeing none, okay. We will move along and let the applicant and agent, or whomever the registered speaker is, comment on the report. And I would just remind you, you have five minutes and I'll let you know when there's one minute remaining.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of council. I'm Natalie, I'm with Stonecrest Engineering. I'm speaking on behalf of Megan and Bob Jacobs. It is fairly brief and small development looking to be done. Essentially, what they're looking to do is certainly, they have a small repair shop that they use to serve the local community. They repair mostly farm machinery and equipment, and they do some semi-truck and trailers. It's a fairly small business. There's multiple other properties in Norfolk County that have a similar zoning with a special provision to allow such use, so that's essentially what the applicant is looking to do.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions from committee? Counselor Columbus, do you want to pose your question?
Yes, I asked previously to the planner as to where they are operating from at the current time, or up until today.
Yes, I believe what staff had said is accurate. I know you also asked about living situation there. I believe that is their primary residence, as far as I know.
Counselor Van Passen?
And maybe I'll ask the deputation to verify, but you know, my understanding that they live there, they have a small shop that they've been operating on, you know, repair farm equipment, that kind of thing. And equipment over the years is getting bigger and bigger and bigger, but they can't fit them inside and getting tired of working outside in the rain and stuff. So they have been looking for quite some time to try to purchase another property that would have the proper zoning and the proper sized building. They've been unsuccessful at that and have spent quite some time working with staff to go through all the proper channels to be allowed to do this. And then they'll be coming back and talking to our building department to build a new larger shop on the other side of the property. And, you know, they're just another example of the ingenuity and the drive of the Norfolk County residents that you start small and you just keep working at it and get bigger as you go. So I'm hoping that the, the agent can sort of verify if I got that, my understanding properly, so.
That is correct, yes. They are a smaller business and they have solely been growing and they're looking to go through all the correct channels to do this properly. And they are hoping that with rezoning on this site, it can be done. The proposed building that they're looking at now, if the rezoning is approved, would be like a 60 by 80 shop. It's nothing huge, but it can encapsule what they're looking to do at this phase of their business.
But it will have doors that are like 14 feet high, so you could actually fit a truck into them.
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Any further questions of committee? Okay, seeing none. Does someone wish to move the staff recommendation or propose an alternative? It is printed on page 194 of the agenda. Counselor Van Passen moving it, Counselor Taylor seconding, and all of those in favor? And that's carried. Just probably important to note, I don't think we have any more staff reports coming tonight from Fabian, so I see we all have all three relatively new planners in the room working together. So it's nice to see you all. I certainly haven't, I've heard from Mohammed once before, but I haven't been able to put a face to the name, and same with you, Fabian, so welcome and thanks for your work. Okay, move. Go ahead, any comments to make? Welcome to Norfolk County Planning Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just want to say thank you, Madam Chair, that was it.
Okay, thanks. We'll move along, staff report PD 20-47. An application has been received to draft plan approve a 32-lot residential subdivision. Each lot would permit a single detached dwelling. The draft plan of subdivision application is being reviewed concurrently with the bylaw amendment application to change the zoning of the subject lands from general industrial to urban residential type 1. 1498745 Ontario Limited and Agent J. H. Cahoon Engineering has put forth the application affecting the lands legally described as Part Block 28, Plan 19B, urban area of Waterford. Staff, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This land is located on north side of Nickel Street and is currently vacant and approximately 1.99 acres in size. The general area is mainly low-density residential and some institutional in nature. On the west side of the subject land is the Waterford Royal Canadian Legion Hall. On the east side, Waterford Heritage and Technical Museum. And on the south side opposite to Nickel Street, there is a future development area. There is a multi-use trail. There is a multi-use trail system formerly known as Canadian Southern Railway that is located on the north side of the property. A portion of the land is within the buffer area of provincially significant wasteland and some part of it is significant woodlands. So through Madam Chair, the subject land is designated as apartment residential in the official plan and general industrial and hazard lands in the zoning bylaw. The application proposes a 32-lot subdivision where a zoning change is applied to residential type 1 being. The proposed overall density is 16 unit per hectare, which is consistent to the county's official plan. The slope area and the rear of the person will remain hazard lands and the proponent proposed municipal water and sewer services for the development. Through Madam Chair, we receive staff and agency comments. Development engineering suggests that adequate water and sanitary services are available in Waterford. A scope environmental impact study was submitted to Norfolk Environmental Assessment Committee and it was approved in 2018. The forestry department reviewed the EIS and a permit was issued to permit the clearing of the land. According to the Forest Conservation Bylaw, tree preservation, my, sorry, tree plantation will be required and that would be a condition for the proposed subdivision. A portion of the land is regulated by Long Point Region Conservation Authority. NPSA reviewed the application and requests a number of documents as conditions for approval. And this includes submission of storm water management report, erosion control plan, grading plan, and geotechnical assessment. No public comments has been received so far for this application.
Thank you, Mohammed. Are there questions of committee to staff? Counselor Huffman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to staff. We're getting these developments coming in, and I'm very thankful that this development is in, is in the ward that I represent. However, my concern is, is that we're getting more development, but we're not, we're not getting any diversity in terms of the housing options. We discussed this as a council over a year or so ago, actually at the beginning of our term, to be honest with you, so coming up almost two years ago, that we were looking for some inclusivity when we were looking at new developments. Does this development offer any of those options for actual affordable housing?
Through Madam Chair, we did not have any information about that, but obviously we will get back to the proponent and ask about that if they're having any permission for affordable housing. But at this time, we don't have any information about that.
This is probably not a helpful time to tell you this, but I almost wonder if that should be part of a pre-consultation meeting with developers? Like just a simple box that they're going to check on an application. Obviously, that's not my wheelhouse and that's more of, more of your level of expertise, but it's a question that we almost get asked on every development issue. And it would be nice to know out of the gate whether or not a developer has plans to meet some of that criteria and then we would dive further into it. I have a couple of questions if there are no further questions around the table. Staff, I'm wondering if you can fill me in, I guess Mohammed, on the tree plantation requirement? Is there a set number of trees per, how does that work?
So generally, I mean, the tree protection bylaw unit says that this is one tree per lot, but also the applicant has to pay a fee for clearing the site. And to my knowledge, this is already paid too, but I'll confirm that also. That's supposed to be paid to the county.
Thank you. And then my second question is concerning the storm water management plan. I know commonly that that is an agreement that developers follow through on when they're, when they're looking at building a subdivision. And then I guess I wondered broadly what the policy is with Norfolk County on the maintenance of those plans, of those storm water ponds in the future? Is this negotiated on each individual development? Or do we have a set plan that we activate with developers? And specifically concerning maintenance in the years to come after the ponds put in?
Through Chair, we talked about the requirement of storm water management report, but this development report did not include any storm water management pond. So for this particular application, there is no storm water management pond.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. But while we're on the topic then, do you know off the top of your head, what, do we have a, a set duration that developers look after the pond before it becomes Norfolk County's problem or?
Through Chair, it depends on what kind of development it will be. It can be a public or it can be a private storm water management pond. In case of private storm water management pond, it is to the developer and to the condominium developer who maintain the pond. And for the public side, if the development, if the storm water management pond is in the public ownership, then the general practice is the county take over the maintenance.
Okay, thank you for that information. Any further questions? So on the applicants and, sorry, I'm behind in my notes here. We have two registered speakers on this report, Mike and Jody. So you can go ahead and you have five minutes. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Ms. Chairman and members of the committee. It's Bob Phillips from J. H. Cahoon Engineering Limited. I'm here with Mike Quattricki on this application. The proposal here is for single-family lots on about two acres of land and they're probably about 40-foot, 12-meter lots on average. We've read the planning staff report and the recommendations contained therein and are just here to answer any questions you might have. We support the planning staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions from Counselor Huffman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask this question of you. In terms of inclusivity, when we're looking at affordable housing, will these homes offer different price points for the community?
We would expect that there'd be a mix of housing depending on the customers. Certainly, the developer feels that these homes are going to be affordable. That's always a tough definition. You know, obviously, they're not subsidized housing in any form, but he's hoping to hit the market to move these houses quickly.
Okay, because that's a, that's a pretty important part for this council, making sure that we're starting to address the needs for affordable housing for individuals in our community. You know, when we're starting with price points of first-time buyers looking at $500,000, which is inaccessible for many people, and in keeping with the neighborhood on Nickel Street, which I'm quite familiar with, with the museum there and the Legion there, and there will be a skate park right near there as well, really is really important, especially to myself as the counselor for this ward, that we have some different price points to offer some, some opportunity for first-time homebuyers.
Thank you very much. I suspect that the purchase price is going to be south of the $500,000 mark, i.e. less. But depending on the purchaser, some of them may but depending on the purchaser, some of them may creep up above. But certainly, the anticipation is that they're going to be lower-cost housing, not ridiculously lower-cost housing, but certainly south of that $500,000.
Thank you for your comments, but I would certainly hope they would be much further south of $500,000. That was kind of an exaggeration, really, from my end. So anyways, those are my comments as the counselor for Ward 7.
Thank you. We'll take those into consideration.
Any further questions? I might just like to piggyback on Counselor Huffman's comments. I think there's, I almost feel as though, and actually, I'm glad that I can see you, planning staff, so talking more to you than the developer per se. I never, I'm quite sure when the best time to have this conversation is. It seems like it comes up in a public hearing matter. It comes up when there's a recommendation in front of us. It comes up when we're negotiating density and it never really gets ironed out for this council, what options are available for accessible, affordable housing, housing that doesn't need to be low-income housing. It's something that is going to assist with the supply and the demand, the inventory supply. We've talked about, you know, having separate entrances and granny suites and things like that, so a first-time homebuyer can purchase and rent out the basement or vice versa. You know, someone who's looking to downsize can purchase a home and rent out the basement. And it feels like we don't really ever get these questions answered. It's, whenever we're talking about it, it's always not the right time or not enough information or it's too far gone in the planning aspect part of it. So I guess I would just like to make those comments directly to the planning department. If there's some information you can share with council or keep that in mind as we move forward, that's, would be helpful. Sure, go ahead. Thanks, Brandon.
Sure, to the chair. It's an incredibly important topic and most municipalities are struggling with this. And it's quite challenging when you're dealing with new build, somewhat greenfield, market-based housing. There's usually, on the housing spectrum, there's a need for rental and support housing and there's one, several tax and tools you can use to try and tackle that. Market-based housing is usually a little bit tougher. Some of the items that could be considered at this stage through subdivisions and zoning is what are the list of permitted uses and dwelling types? So the zoning that's proposed, I understand, allows for single detached dwellings and accessory residential dwelling units, so a granny flat or a second unit on the property or on the building. But there may be other dwelling types to look at, semi-detached dwellings or possibly townhouse, but then also, should there be a block for more affordable rental housing? Because we do have an overall policy target for affordable housing. The key challenge is that through the planning process, we can't really deal with price points and directly with affordability. We can't require that the development only sell at a certain amount or the rents are only a certain amount. That is a challenge. Those are the things that you can consider right now. I think it's appropriate for, definitely for council and the community and staff to raise that. I like the idea of the pre-consultation, to have some information as like a checkbox for that as to all of the proposals and applications coming in. Since I'm fairly new, I'd like to get a good handle on the housing situation here to know where the exact targets are and what the needs are in the community as it relates to rental housing versus ownership. But everything will count. So if there's anything that can be done on an application-by-application basis, that's helpful. So I think it's more than appropriate to raise it today as part of the public hearing. There's a few tools we can explore between now and the next step.
Okay, thanks for that information. And I think Counselor Huffman certainly talked about it, but just for your own information, Waterford's a really unique area because it has quick access to the highway. So we are seeing a lot of first-time homebuyers come there, younger families come there because they can commute and travel to work, but, you know, I think that there still needs to be that variety in the housing and that's what Counselor Huffman is always, probably the first council member to point out when a development comes in, what type of variety are we going to see regarding affordability and accessibility? Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we're off-topic of this application, anyway, I like what I just heard from staff because, you know, I would think that, you know, we have to remember what council's job is. Council sets the policy of the official plan, council sets the policy under our zoning bylaw. And, you know, developers, builders, first-time homebuyers, they can look at those policies and say, yes, this is allowed here, so this is what I can do, and they go through that process. And I don't think we can cross the line where, you know, we could start, you know, federing a deal to say, you know what, we'll let you have that subdivision if you do this. You know, we can't cross that line, but we can do is to work to change those policies. And, you know, we have targets on the percentages of lower price points accessible, but they're not written into it. And, you know, staff just said that they're going to look at a few of the finer details and, you know, I would expect at some point down the road, staff will be coming with different options, how we can rephrase our official plans and zoning bylaws to try to get a bit more teeth into what, you know, it's great to have these good intentions, but actually, if you don't have the rules in place, you can't get there. And, you know, I look forward at some point in time, staff bringing something forward on some little tweaks that we can try to make this better. And like the first step was that accessory dwelling change that we made. It opens up another option out there and, you know, hopefully, it will free up some homes, allow for, you know, a better way to pay a mortgage by renting out a downstairs apartment or something. So we're making those little tweaks, but we can't just out and out say, we'll give you one thing as long as you do something for us. That'd sort of be against the rules.
Okay, thank you. One final comment or question maybe to the speaker, sustainability and aesthetics of design and has there been any consideration given to that part of your development? I know that that's also a little bit premature, but that's something that we've tossed around quite a bit, sustainable builds and the materials used and make sure that they're fitting in with the community and we're not seeing the same cookie-cutter design-type subdivision. Are there any comments that Mike or Jody or Bob can make? Bob can make?
You know, we're hearing stuff tonight that, you know, we weren't really prepared to discuss because I didn't even know it was being considered. So we'll kind of keep our minds open and we'll go forward as this application proceeds.
Okay, well, glad to share that with you and have you hear it from council. Are there any further comments from committee? Seeing none, does someone wish to move the staff recommendation or propose an alternative? Counselor Taylor, Counselor Columbus, moving the staff recommendation? Okay, all those in favor? And that's carried. Item F. Staff-
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Staff Report PD 20-49, an application has been received to amend the zoning bylaw to include site-specific zoning for the subject lands, to include the additional use of gymnasium and to amend the parking requirement to the existing 40. Teagan Fitch, on behalf of Trademark Warehousing Limited, has put forth the application affecting the lands described as lots 11 to 16, Block 62, lots 1 to 7 and 14 to 20, Block 70, Plan 182, urban area of Simcoe, Norfolk County Municipality known as 1, sorry, municipality known as 175 Robbins Street. Staff, we're ready for you.
Thank you. Through the chair, we have one of our newer planners. Nicole is here to do a brief presentation.
Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. This exciting proposal was submitted by Ms. Teagan Fitch on behalf of the property owner for permissions related to adding an additional use of gymnasium to the property currently zoned general industrial for the purposes of allowing a gymnastics facility for children with special needs. The application also includes relief, a request for relief from the required parking of 162 spots. The applicant is requesting permission to allow the existing 40 spots at the location to service the proposed and existing uses based on documentation provided in their traffic impact brief. The property includes an existing warehouse, which also contains a personal storage facility. The proposed use would be located in the southeast corner of the warehouse and there's currently no proposed changes to the external structure. The property is located just northwest of Council Chambers at 175 Robinson Street at the corner of Robinson and Head. It is neighbored by the Norfolk County Robinson Street Offices, residential and commercial uses, Talbot Gardens, and the Unilever's Good Humor Briers Facilities. Internal review of the application identified a need to confirm the location of existing parking spots, including designated accessible parking spots, which have been identified to the applicant. They've stated to staff that they anticipate the appropriate documentation of parking within the week for staff to review and to provide to council. A pre-consultation was conducted with the applicant and no site plan was deemed to be required due to the lack of external changes. Since the writing of the report, staff have received 24 more letters of support for the applicant, bringing the total numbers of letters of support to 30. Staff will provide all letters received with the future report on the application for council's review. The applicant is also attending the meeting virtually. Hopefully, she got connected and should you have any questions for her directly?
Thank you, Nicole. Any questions from committee to staff? Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is with respect to the traffic impact study, why would we ask, or perhaps the applicant just wished to submit about, why would we ask for something like that for something of this nature? It doesn't seem like overly huge impact to the immediate community there.
Through your speaker, sorry, Chair. The applicant identified through the traffic impact brief that the existing traffic impact calculations look at warehouses through all of their uses. So they included use was the mini-storage, which is kind of grouped in with warehouse, as well as this proposed use. And when they combined, they created the 162 parking spots. However, through the traffic impact brief, the engineer writing supported the idea that because largely the gymnastics use, which is the only change in use for the site, is largely going to be pickup and drop-off of the children participating, there wouldn't be a large impact, as well as that the times of use would be staggered with the gymnastics happening more in the evening, as well as earlier on weekends, and it wouldn't directly impact the existing parking and therefore require additional spaces. Does that answer?
Just to supplement, it's more of a parking impact brief than a traffic impact brief.
Yes.
I think you're correct. It wasn't necessarily looking at the surrounding road network to look at capacity, it was more exploring the parking reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Further to that, was it a requirement from Norfolk County that that be provided on this file?
Yes, parking requirements would have to be met. And if there was a reason not to or have them adjusted, they would have to be adjusted through the zoning bylaw process.
Wow, okay. Any further questions from committee members to staff? I have one. It's kind of a broad, vague question that you may not be able to answer, but through your research on this file, are you familiar with other municipalities that permit gymnasium, sporting structures? That's the wrong word for it, but inside warehouses in other municipalities?
I can speak briefly to that. I would be happy to provide a more formal report to council if you wish, but I have seen in previous municipalities the need for facilities such as CrossFit that require a larger amount of space as well as the height impact and also based on the level of noise required and the type of facility they are. So I think it is something that has been seen, but I can definitely provide more of a supplemental report if you would like.
Nope, no need. That's perfect. I had assumed it was, but I wondered if you were able to just confirm that. No worries, no report needed. I'm going to pass it over to Counselor Taylor.
I was just about to say, I've been in a few athletic facilities and warehouse districts that it's certainly a use in the areas.
Perfect, okay. Seeing no further comments from committee members to staff, we have one representative of Unilever to speak to this report. Candace, if you're ready, you can go ahead. Candace, are you on the line? Or Teagan, or anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, I don't think, we may have lost them. I see another name there on the computer screen, but, okay. So final call then from committee members. Any final questions? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Counselor Taylor, Counselor Michelli, and all those in favor? Carried? Okay, so does someone wish to move the staff recommendation or propose an alternative on page 242? Actually, I already have it. Sorry, Andy, I've been getting alternate movers and seconders for you tonight. I have a motion moved by Counselor Rabbit, seconded by Counselor Columbus, that Report PD 20-49, Public Hearing Report for ZNPL 2019-293 be received for information and that any comments received as part of the statutory public meeting, in addition to those already received, be considered in a future recommendation staff report. All of those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, that concludes our public hearing. Would you like a proper break? To go eat? There's food. Okay, let's take a break at 6:36. Come back at quarter to seven? Seven? 15 minutes? Okay, we'll come back shortly before 7:00. to seven? Seven? Fifteen minutes? Okay, we'll come back shortly before seven.